We'll now call the special call meeting slash work session of the past school, school board of trustees to order. We're gonna start with Mr. Johnson leading us in prayer. Please, Mr. Rubin, please make notes that four members of the president and Mr. Leon Irving, he should join us in a few minutes. We have an agenda for Mr. Doffert with any changes?
There is none. I have given you all supplements to the packet which coincided with the end. We spent our entire day yesterday trying to be solution driven on some of the concern and things that you guys have brought up. We also ran some numbers. From a budgetary standpoint, and we'll get into budget at some point today, it's very difficult for us to look at adding positions at this point of the year. There is a plan for the future as it relates to making some positions a little more economic for the district and a little better distributed. I'll explain that when we get to that part of the meeting and we'll answer any questions that you may have. And I realize we have a group of people here this morning to discuss the grading policy for athletics. And so what I would ask is if the board could give us some flexibility in working through some of these solutions that we have first. We will mark it off from the order in the beginning of your binder. If you just look at your A through W, if we clear an issue, we'll scratch that issue off and do the next issue. There's quite a bit of information that we have to cover today. And one of the first things I would like to get out of the way because it, and here's the other thing, I'm not asking any board member to make a motion or a vote of any kind. We will adjust language today. We will preserve the language and then we'll come back to you in the next regularly scheduled board meeting. And then you can vote up or down whatever the language is that we take today. That way we're not taking any action as it relates to that. We do have some employees that were able to get under contract. Mr. Vax, Mr. Sessons worked on to have that as part of this meeting today as well. And finally, I'll say that while we have a working order of A, B, C, D on our itinerary, that we're gonna jump around a little bit here at the front if that's acceptable to, from the board. Because I'd like to get some of these things out of the way, clarify some things you may not know about and to let you know that we are working actively, working on all these things that you've brought to us as concerns. And so I've tried to supplement any information. Ms. Wilson, we probably will have a pretty lengthy discussion on the curricular, CADA, SAT test, all of that stuff so that the board can get a greater understanding of the chronology of testing and what's required by the state, what's required by that special education. There's just a lot of different dimensions to our testing. The first thing I'd like to get off our plate, and again, this doesn't require a board vote. I just need you guys to nod to move forward. If you look at the supplement that I gave you this morning, and I think that it will be your very last page.
Well, we need to approve the agenda.
I'm sorry.
Does any board member have anything anybody can add to the agenda to discuss? Okay. Any motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Mr. Fisher McNeil to approve. I think the motion's aye.
Aye.
Motion can be put forward.
All right, so as it relates to the Bridge Academies, the, I was asked at the last meeting, at the last regularly scheduled meeting, to present to the board the Bridge Academy. We now have limited days to actually get some action filming done because we're trying to build a commercial for it. I've been contacted multiple times by Hummingbird, which is a company that we hired out of Mobile to do this work. And I was asked at that meeting if I would get some input from Chevron Eagle Senior River Hospital, and I took it a step further than once the Jackson County Economic Development Foundation. So Alan Sutton and Amy Brandenstein, met with Amy yesterday, went through the concept. Amy said she'd like to see it more developed, but she understands the concept of the bridge. Alan was pretty much in the same boat. I talked to them because we've worked together now for, since I've been superintendent, on a comprehensive marketing plan for our communities. And so they were, they're positive about building something for our communities. Secondly, we met with Lee Bond, Melinda Damon and I met with Lee Bond. Lee Bond was favorable towards it. He said that the Senior River Hospital's trying to do the same thing between their two hospitals because they have the same doctors in both hospitals and people have a perception of what hospital's better, but they're using the same doctors at both sites. So he said that he was, he liked the idea. He liked what we were doing with it. I met with Victoria Hunt yesterday morning. Mr. West was a part of that meeting. She really likes the bridge concept. She runs a medical academy there. And then I met with George Freeland, Mary Martha Henson, and that was with Jeannie Steer, Derek Creed, and myself went and visited with them. Again, they asked lots of questions, that they were talking about the marketing of our community and how do we get people to come here. And then finally, Lee Bond, who is CEO of Senior River Hospital, messaged me back yesterday that his two PR people will be ready to sit down with me as soon as this meeting's over today so we can get together and let them give us some feedback. So what I'm asking the board is can I let the Hummingbird group move forward with the bridge and see what the concept is? And then if we don't like it, then the board can say, you know what, let's go in a different direction. But we do need to start developing this before we get out of school. So if I just need an auto agreement or that's okay?
Yeah, I would say yes. I would like to see maybe towards the end of this meeting, there's some video about the bridges or something?
PowerPoint?
PowerPoint. Can we, can we look at that? Just not right now?
While we're waiting on Mr. Irving to get here, because the next topic, I don't wanna, this is, this is something that I don't think he really was one way or the other. But let me, let me go ahead and write that real quick. It'll take five minutes to go through it.
Just while he's out, just to give everybody a heads up, we had a, there was a home invasion and shooting at 5:30 this morning at the apartment complex next door to Cherokee. So when students arrived, there were still police all over the area. We have put out a notice that has nothing to do with us. Police are investigating and handling it, but there are, people are already spreading that something has happened at the school and there is nothing happening at the school. So just in case you get any, that's why I'm in and out. That was Doug Adams asking some questions and just assuring us that everything's handled over there. So just in case you get in and had nothing to do with us and was long before schools even started.
All right, so here is, and, you're supposed to, you seen it?
I did.
Yeah, you seen it? So I'm gonna read here, Mr. Green. This is. And then after you're done with it, it'll all self play. You can just put through until the end way through.
Sure.
And I can watch while y'all, we can move on to another item that you want. I mean, I'm in favor of moving forward with it based on the feedback that you're getting. Now, one, one concern I've, I could, because I don't wanna slow you up because one concern I've gotten from teachers and administrators is that, you know, this is a lot that we're trying to put into a short period of time. And I understand all of your time, but I just don't wanna hold y'all up on that time.
Yeah, let me just, let me just explain the, as it relates to this, when we first, when we first got that information, when we first got the information on this, everybody was kinda scratching their head saying, "Bridge, it's so common." And I mean, most of them forgot it was common. And so I went home that weekend, even my leadership team was saying, "That's really common." So I went home one Saturday and I put that PowerPoint together and did all the scripting of it. Now, they came back and revised a lot of what I did and fixed some things for me, but then we had a better product to sell as it related to what the Bridge Academy would actually look like. And basically, it's an integration of a lot of different services so every one of our kids have a career pathway to follow. And we are, I'm meeting with our group today on the college and career pathway at three o'clock to kinda set that course. But we're gonna take it small bites as it relates to the Bridge Academy. So we'll go ahead and get into the grading policy. And my coaches in here are well aware and my administrators of how I feel about athletics and academics. And none of us as coaches would be sitting in here having not been able to finish what we started in school. So if you will look in your packet, Mr. Freeman went out yesterday, and the choices we have are to take no action on current policy as it relates to, as it relates to our athletic program, or we can take one of the two, or we can change it to something else. The coaches themselves, let me get you right here. All right, if you'll look, let's probably look through your package. It says, "Ungrading policy," and it's in the, in the supplement I gave you. "Ungrading policy changes." There are two options here. And so before we get into it, because I know that we had coaches that were representative, asked to be here, and what I did basically was I duplicated the coaches and administrators from both sides of the school district. Number one, and this was actually the proposal that was made, the original proposal that was made for the change that we have, in looking at the policy, there is some challenges in the policy that we have because zeros are put in for absences. And it could put a kid in a situation where they may seem that they're ineligible, but they're really one on a college day and zeros in the grade book. So in order for us to correct that, we went and got, you know, we looked at what was offered. Now, Coach Sims actually offered the proposal, proposal, the first proposal. And the second proposal was another proposal that I added in because I was trying to make sure that if a student became ineligible, that it wouldn't be a nine-week issue. It would be if you got that second F up by then, because we now have five classes that you can take. And if we do go back to a four-period day or four-block day at any point, then we may go back to saying, hey, well, if we'd like to go back to zero Fs. Because guys, it's lowering my standards, it's lowering our standards when we accept an F for kids. But there are those circumstances where a kid has an F because they're challenging themselves. The issue that I don't wanna run into is that it's okay to make an F, which is gonna put a lot more pressure on our coaches. And the decision you make, you will probably hear from coaches, because I'm gonna require that they break up their team and that they have people specifically assigned to monitor their kids' grades on their coaching staffs. And so that they're working in conjunction with teachers and administrators and counselors, because our objective is for all of our kids to pass clearinghouse and be able to go D1 out of our program if they're capable of doing that. So proposal number, and here again, we're not voting on it. I just need to know, you know, where you are and you do have some coaches in the room that may wanna express themselves as it relates to this. So would you like to hear from coaches and administrators?
I would. I would too.
Okay. Coach Sims?
For those that don't know me, my name is Louis Sims. And when we were, were given our request for changes to the handbook and everything back in January, one of the things that I talked to Coach Wright about, Coach H and several other coaches, Coach Tillman, was our grading policy and how the zero F policy as originally stated was when we had four classes. And when we added that fifth class, that kinda added a new dynamic to it. And the original rationale was, well, once PE and only have three classes to study for. And that was the rationale, I think, behind going to a zero F policy. What I found was, we had children that struggled. My example is I had a guy who was taking an elective class as a senior. He had 10 100s in his daily grades. He had a test, made a 50 on the test. At two-week mark, he was on, he was in, oh, well, he was on probation. Two weeks later, he had no test. He had four more hundreds. He had a 64 and he was ineligible. Not because he wasn't doing the work in class, because he did poorly on test. And my, you know, I go home and I'm expressing my frustration to my wife. My wife says, "Well, I failed biochemistry midterm with a 48 and I spent the next nine weeks studying my tail off to pass that class," which I did. Said, you know, "Had I been on your team, I'd have been ineligible for, for nine weeks because I had a 48 in the grade book." And then we changed our policy again to say if you're absent, you get a zero until you make that work up, which presented another set of challenges. So my, my, my proposal was to just go to the MHSAA rule every nine weeks, which now it takes, there's no, oh, the teacher didn't put the grade in, or I didn't make up, I didn't have time to make up my work grade or final when they do at the end of the nine weeks. And it's not a fluid number. So that's, that's where the idea came from. So, so what I did say, and the one thing, one change I would make to it, instead of say, "Pass four out of five classes," I would go to four out of five, earn four out of five credits, because the way our classes are structured, you might have 10 classes. And that eliminates some, some ambiguity in the language there. And I did that because I wanna err on the side of the child. I want them to challenge themselves. I want them to take AP classes. I want them to take honors classes. But I also want them to understand that while they're challenging themselves, they don't have to make a choice between playing sports and being in advanced classes, that they can do both. Because to me, a well-rounded, renaissance man is a, is a young man or a young woman who is involved in athletics, they're involved in their community, they're involved in their school, and they're doing well academically. You know, and the last eight years, I've been very fortunate to coach several players that have gone on to do great things. And everybody's pulling for Jalen Smith to get drafted today, be the first player I've ever had drafted in the NFL. But we've got, you know, right now, three guys that have graduated, earned their degrees. We've had some, some upwards of 24 players, well, junior college level, 12 go Division One. All of them eligible coming out of, out of high school. Because we did have coaches on staff that were continually monitoring those guys. So it's not, I don't think it's a lowering of the standard. I think it's a un-muddying of the water and making it clear where you take the, you know, you don't go to a principal and say, "Hey, would you look at this for me?" And then they have to make a decision where human emotion comes into play. Now it's cold hard facts. And, and that's, that was the proposal that, and where it came from. So I'll field any questions if you have any.
Yeah, the majority of the credits that are under at the semester level, there are nine-week courses where you can earn a half credit. So there is the break point, but at that point, we do know through a progress report that a child is passing or failing. The, the issue with the maintenance of it is that the zeros that get entered for various reasons are impacting eligibility for kids who are college, going to college days and things like that. And that means you have to be perfect from the teacher's side and the administrative side in the managing of the, of the information. So, yeah, that's, that's a, and then that's why we took a harder look at it, Coach, whenever I got the, you know, when we got, there's two sides of every story.
Yes, sir.
My thing is, again, there is, there, when we're not monitoring the grades at the level that these kids begin to not give an effort and they're remaining eligible when they're in a subject carry class and they're not giving any effort and they're remaining eligible, that's the thing I'm trying to guard against with this. Now, we don't have that because subject carries are crucial to graduation. There are four subject carry tests that they've gotta be successful in, and I wanna make sure that that is a priority for our students is to pass first. But again, that's the flexibility that we've accepted, you know, from your all standpoint. Any questions for Coach?
I was gonna ask a question. Do you, do we still have the policy in the handbook? I guess I should know it, but it used to be when I taught that if a parent did not come to sign the student in the day after he got to check out by 9:00 PM that they, at 9:00 AM that they got a zero?
And right now, if you're not there, you get zeros until the work's turned.
No, I'm talking about if you check out and say you didn't have a test or any, well, you have a test and all, but you get a zero simply because a parent did not sign you in.
It becomes, it's just an unexcused. It just becomes an excuse. And it can be considered truancy or whatever, I think is what it says.
Yes, and I mean, that explains every last bit of, I guess if we're gonna say heartburn that I have with the policy, I've got a child that's a student athlete that was out with a sports injury for several weeks having surgery this past school year. So she wouldn't have been able to play at this point anyhow. And the faculty and staff at the school contorted themselves to accommodate us with makeup work and things like that. So I'm not saying that. But the days after that procedure, when we're at home and she's laid up in the living room and I'm on active pair, watching everything she's got go to a 50 and a 40 until we can get these things turned in. And especially, you know, when we have test averages that are so heavily weighted into our core classes and you have to have two in this time period, well, if they give one of those, you can't make that test up from a long-term injury sitting at the house, right? So, I mean, it can, that one grade can, can be very detrimental to your overall average. So I think something like this is, is much better than where we were because we don't want to give the impression that we just want you to play sports and whatever happens with your courses is just what it is. No, we don't wanna send that, that impression at all. But I do think that, like you said, this would be un-muddying of the waters for sure. Because I think our coaches have confidence, the, the standards that they have for these young men and women, I see them enforce it on both sides of the river all the time. I don't think they're going to let that happen as far as that goes. But I think this would give them, you know, the, the help that they need for playing the patients like moving forward.
Coach Hart?
Just talking with the other coaches at school, pretty much everybody's saying what needs to be said on it. The problem we have is like we'll have some kids who actually go on a school activity and are getting zeros for a school activity. We've had one young lady, she was straight A's and she went on a school activity, it was baby club or something like that, and there was a test given in class and she went on probation. And we do push our kids now. Had a young man who had straight A's and Bs and we pushed him to AP Calculus. And I remember him crying one day coming in here to me and saying, "Coach, I don't know if I'm gonna be eligible." I said, "What's wrong?" He said, "Well, I have an F in AP Calc." And I went, "All right, so we can push through this." I said, "What were you doing taking AP Calc?" He said, "Well, they want me to do it to push to get higher, you know, to get better scholarships and like that." I said, "Well, it's gonna be okay." But that put a lot of stress on that kid and the mother and all them called me off. So I said, "Look, we've, we've got great teachers. It's gonna be okay," but it was just kinda undue stress. And he was a kid that earned a scholarship to go to the next level. It's like I said, I don't think anybody in here wants to diminish the fact that we want to hold these kids to a higher standards, but we also kinda wanna make it a little bit fair for them.
Right.
I don't wanna lose a kid personally, and you know, I might be in the minority. Some of these kids, I want them around me as much as possible. Because I know I'm all they got and us coaches are all they have. So we wanna keep them around us as much as possible and not them thinking, "All right, if I fall behind, then I'm done with sports." So, like I said, that's how we are. Thank you.
Coach Hart?
First off, um, I'm under the, I was previous at the Alvin and I had my own policy going into while I was at the Alvin. I believe that, I like, I like what we have in place, but I would like to see it changed a little bit. I believe that a kid shouldn't fail the class at all as well, but I believe that you have, if we have a kid that has one F and he's below a 60, is what I talked to you about the other day, Coach. If he's below a 60, let's continue to put him on the probationary list, the two-week probationary period. But if a kid has a, above a 60, 61 until 64 and he's on there for a week or two, let's continue to let him be eligible because we're trying to keep kids around. After two weeks, if he hadn't pulled it up, put him on probation and then let's move through probationary period that way. If a kid's failing two classes, automatic suspension and eligible right away until he can get that grade put up. So if a kid has a 64 and a 63 in two different classes, he's ineligible, just off, off the back. You keep kids around, you keep kids, those borderline kids, you keep them, because those kids want to play. They need something to hold on to. So you keep those kids around and when you, you know, when we rule the kids ineligible, you get kids that, you know, just, that just fall apart and just decide that, you know, "I can't play, so what's the point of me being here? So I'm just gonna shut down." You get kids that shut down. I've lost some kids this past year because, because of that issue. Also had a kid, you know, two kids actually, that for some, whatever reason, they were taking an English four class, they got held up for two weeks. And I had to try to go talk to Dr., talk to Dr. Peyton about trying to get them eligible. Well, whatever the issue was, it was, it was, they hadn't had any grades put in. So there was a bit of a hiccup. So the kid was ruled eligible, but to prove the point to the kid, to get him to understand, he was cleared, but I suspended him a half for two games because he should've been taking care of business on the front end and not waiting to the back end. Sometimes, some of the kids in the district are playing, they know the rule, they understand the rule, and they're just playing it on both sides. So that's what I got.
Okay. Coach Green? I'm sure you'll bear with me a moment. I've got a few notes about this, but the first thing I'd like to say is this, that I've been very, very blessed 16 years to work in the school district. Started out with Mr. Adolphage, went to Mr. Rogers, Mr. Nix, Mr. West, Mr. Sharpen, now Mr. Tolder. They are all gentlemen of just extreme integrity. And, you know, they're pleased with everything that they've ever done in trying to accommodate us and helping these kids out. Really, when you get down to this, for me, if you have children, and I have three of my own, one's adopted, the one that's adopted comes from the worst neighborhood in South Mississippi. He's a graduate of college, but I'm gonna tell you, I would never let my child practice or participate in sports, much less play with an F or even a D. It's just not gonna happen. It's not, not gonna happen because I know what their future is, I know where that's going. Look, we've been blessed, we've had 16 kids offered since I've been there, five Division Ones, three kids have gone pro. Been blessed in that regard. But that's 16 in that number. The greater number of the kids that, that I've been blessed to be able to help, because of all these gentlemen that I've mentioned, they've had to go and do their academics. Now, for most of those, I just wrote some notes this year, 11 of my 12 kids were Pell qualifiers on my varsity team. If I took all 24 that we had, that would've been 23, excuse me, I'm sorry, 23, but 21 out of 24. So going back, looking at grading standards, I don't let kids even participate in practice without going to tutoring when they fall below a 75. The reason I go to a 75 is 75 equals out to a 2.3 GPA. If you wanna be able to go to a four-year school and just qualify to get a scholarship, now this is not compete, just qualify to be on scholarship and practice. At a 2.3, you've got to have three 19s and an 18. That usually doesn't go with a 2.3. That's a bare minimum. The University of Georgia's women's coach told me, we were having a discussion one day, she was like, "Coach, I'm sorry, your policy and your district's policy is not good enough to get them in here." That's just the bare minimum to qualify. If they want to play, all right, they are going to have to score a 93 on the ACT, 323s and a 24. That's astronomical, the odds that that's gonna happen. But even remove away from that, and I just got off the phone yesterday, had a kid that graduated five years ago and we just signed him to a scholarship yesterday. Five years removed from school, been working in shipyard, working at Walmart, kept his grades up though, he was with me, you know, we stayed on him. And all these things are mentioned, you know, I understand the coaches and what their concerns are, but you've got a 10, 10-day, two-week window. And I keep track of usually 24 to 28 kids by myself, two or three times a week. I know everything that's going on with them. If they're absent and that goes to a zero, I have discussions with the teachers, that's not going to affect them practicing for me, other than, hey, here's your, your tutorial session, here's your makeup session, you've got to get to that. A lot of these kids, when I have that kinda stuff, I'm just telling you from the backgrounds, you have to walk up to tutor, which I do consistently to a note, here's the habit, don't break it because you know I'm coming. And then they do it on their own. But my point with this is, is that in talking with the JuCo coach, I was made aware of this yesterday, even I wasn't aware of. Used to be you'd talk about if you don't, if you have Bs on your transcript, you come out of high school with Bs on your transcript. You don't make a 19 on the ACT. Still getting to junior college, Coach Freeman and I've had this discussion many times, but here's what's gonna happen to you, all right? If you have a 13 or 14 on the ACT, you're gonna have to do six hours in each core for no credit. No credit whatsoever. If you have a 15 to 17, you're gonna do three hours in each area on that. So basically, you're gonna spend a half a year to a year in school eating up scholarship for no credit. That's what's gonna happen. These kids, the other side of that is going back to this, that if they wanna keep their Pell Grant, now 11 of my 12 varsity players this year, Pell qualifiers. If you wanna keep your Pell Grants, you have to maintain a 2.0 even in the junior college system. And, you know, if you can't do a 75 in high school, first of all, you're not going to qualify for a four-year. But if you can't do a 2.0 in high school consistently, with all the provisions that are made, and I'm, I'm tight, I'm hard about this, there's no question about it. But these gentlemen in our school system, I've worked in many school systems, 34 years I've been doing this. There is a school system that I've been around, or all my coaching friends, all the coaches that have coaches that have come into this school district, from all of them, it's pro coaches. Tim Floyd came in our school district one day. Billy Donovan's been in our school district. And they were all, "This is amazing, can't believe, can't believe how great the behavior is. Can't believe that you're holding your kids to this kind of accountability. Wish we could get everybody to do this because we've got a lot of recruits on our list that we can't touch. We're gonna have to try to move them through JuCos if we can do that." But you get past that, to keep your Pell Grants, you gotta have a 2.0, all right? Again, I had a young man came into the parking lot to me the other day and said, "Coach McQueen, just finished with my process operator's degree." Another young man was with me, I'm about to wrap up over here, all right? They're full Pell Qualifiers. They just said, "Hey, thank God that you, Mr. West," they both were with me, one was Mr. West, "thank God that you did what you did. I wouldn't have been able to get out of school. Couldn't do it." I understand the gentleman, you know, their concerns with the kid, you want a kid to do more, I understand that. We do, we have that window. I'm with teachers constantly. If, if it's a problem you miss for a school day, if it's a problem with illness, we look over that. "Mr. West, now, when you first got there, it's Coach McQueen, you're not gonna let him play with a D? You're not gonna let him practice?" "Well, they're gonna be in tutoring, Mr. West." "But what about if that's all they can do?" I said, "Sir, I promise you, go down to your sped department, we're gonna have a conversation. And if that sped teacher tells me this is the absolute best that that child can do," and we've had two of those, "one of them signed and went on to Northeast College and graduated." But if that's the best they can do, you know, we're gonna let them play. Once those sped people tell me that's the max we can get out with accommodations. So, I just don't believe that lowering your standards, I will say this to you, that both the Auburn Compliance Director, Drew Clinton at Ole Miss, and Georgia's Women's Coach, when they come in to speak at coaching clinics, this is what happens. There'll be about 200 or 300 coaches sitting in the room for the first presenter, and when he comes up, this is gonna be about a compliance, academic standards, you know what happens to that room? 18 people left in the room, I counted. Coaches don't wanna hear it. They don't wanna hear it. And they both, all of them got up and talked to you, "This is a problem we constantly face. It's really a travesty for our kids." It is. So, I just, it can be done, it takes a lot of work to stay on top of them and keep them eligible. It takes some understanding of what's going on, but it can be done, it's just work to do it. And it is best for them because every kid that you do allow to slip through those cracks is probably a kid we're all gonna be taking care of for the rest of our life, in one way or the other. To me, this business has to go beyond high school's fault, just past it. You start lowering your standards, you're gonna have a problem with that because they're not gonna make it to the next level. It's not gonna happen. So, I understand, you know, maybe there's some tweaks in it, but I'm telling you, out of 24 kids this year that I had, we had a 3.4 GPA. I don't count PE, I don't count weightlifting, there's no basketball on it, because when a college coach comes to me, he asks for a transcript and this is what he wants to see. Highlight the core classes in one color, please. Highlight the college academic electives in another color, please. Not interested in anything else. So I just wanna thank all of you, I've worked in many other places, gentlemen, for allowing me to not have to go through that with kids and what you've allowed kids to be able to do. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I got a couple questions for Coach. Coach, I appreciate your comment.
All right.
There's been somewhat of a memorandum or a recommendation for a tweak in the policy. Are you not in favor of tweaking the policy in that fashion?
The only thing, if it's a technicality in the policy where the kid has an F and for whatever reason it goes past a two-week period due to like he's talking about with an injury, an illness, can't get back in school, whatever, whatever it may be, I have no problem with that. The other side of it is, is that what I've found, and I had this discussion, I go to church at First Baptist Pastor Goode and had this discussion with a couple of parents who are really concerned about the policy, and I simply said this, I said, "You know, look, first of all, is your kid gonna be out practicing or doing whatever with an F or a D? It's not gonna happen, all right? But second, if there was a problem with the injury, or if there was a problem, like I'll go to a teacher, 'Hey, what happened?' 'Oh, they bombed that DA, they bombed that test, they bombed whatever.'" Okay, but they're working hard, they're doing everything they possibly can. No problem, we will give them until the next major grade is put in to clean that up and make that happen. And that's how I handle it.
Okay. I think what I've heard is you may be in favor of tweaking the policy.
I'm not in favor of going to the state policy, sir, because I-
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the state policy, because I think what we have right now is we have, we have the state policy on one hand, right, which is the MHSA policy, which is, I believe, two Fs, right, at the end of the semester, or articulate, what is the state policy?
For us, it would be passing four out of five with a 70 average, overall, a 70 overall average.
Okay, so you have to pass four out of five with a 70 average to be eligible, roughly, is the state policy, and that's one hand, right? And then we have our policy that's way over here on the other hand, which is stricter than any high school in the state, isn't it?
It's not that tough, really, though, sir.
But I'm just, I just wanna make sure-
We offer to equalize and also with a principal's discretion.
I understand, but is it the strictest in the state?
I don't know.
I think, I think it is. And then, and then I believe it's stricter than any college has. I don't, I think when Billy Donovan was at Florida, he wasn't sitting kids for, for, you know-
Sir, I know him personally well, very shy, he's chief assistants with the Dallas Mavericks now.
Yeah.
He's been in my building like a half a dozen times.
I, I understand that, but I don't think-
They're super tight on this.
Yeah, but I, at least when I was in college, I'm not aware of any colleges that would sit kids during the semester for, for grades that were happening in the semester, right? They would, they would sit kids for grades that happened the previous semester, but they wouldn't sit kids that were happening during the semester. I'm not aware of any colleges that, now, there certainly could be, and they could have the discretion to do that, but I, like, for example, I mean, I can't remember a Division One football player or a Division One basketball player, you know, a headline going across the screen saying Zion Williamson's sitting for, because he got a C in a class or a D in a class. You typically get ineligible because of what you did the previous semester, so that's what I'm trying to balance, is the MHSA standard, which is way over here, right? And it seems like everybody in the room generally is like, "We don't wanna go to the MHSA standard, we wanna have higher standards than that." And then we have our standard that's just way over here, which my feedback I've gotten from parents, from teachers, from administrators, and from coaches, is it's the strictest in the state, and the people would like some discretion to do some of their own things there, which I respect what you are doing and I very much appreciate how you've handled it. And I think we should be able to give Coach McQueen some discretion to be able to handle his program in the sense that he wants to handle his program, and that we shouldn't hold him to exactly what we wanna do. I think that's a good thing, and I think it's admirable how you've handled it. I think that, I think, just think there are circumstances that may be different for every coach.
Just to answer your question, I just got off the phone the other day with Coach Dees out at Colwin. He lost three kids this year in the middle of the semester, their grades were so bad, his athletic director and the president came to him and they just had to go, go to a shutdown. And, you know, the teacher complaining, the lack of effort in class, etc., so that goes on, sir.
All right. Let me get us back on track now, if we can move on. We've got two proposals before us, and let me just state for everybody in the room, you know my position as it relates to being accepting of Fs. I'm really hard on that, and I, we can go through a litany of examples I can provide, but at the present, here's the issue. We have a system in place that's going to be corrected from the absence side, but in lieu of that, I think that we have to err on the side of children as it relates to the potential for them to be ruled eligible through some mistake or error that we're making, or our inability to accurately monitor the quality of grades being put in, all. So the nine-week break, I think, is a fair way of looking at what the original recommendation was, and, and again, I am going to err on the side of children and try to be as practical as I can, and everybody in the room knows that if I get a bad report and we're not watching what kids are doing, that you're gonna hear from Coach Freeman and you're gonna hear from the principal about it, because I am gonna keep track of everything that goes on. But as it relates to that, if you look at the proposals, the original proposal stated that if we had two failing grades at the nine-week period, that student will be ruled ineligible for the next nine weeks. The adjustment, I think, that was made on number two was that we would check, give the child an opportunity in that second nine weeks to pull that second F up to a passing grade, so there would be some incentive to correct that before the semester was over with, and that way they could reclaim eligibility. So that's basically what that was put in there for. So there's two choices there that y'all can read through. The first choice would be for an elimination of eligibility for the second nine weeks, is that correct?
No, that was the original proposal, and we resisted, we felt like they should have a chance to regain eligibility during the nine weeks, so the first proposal is at the progress report date and after, if they do not have two Fs, then they would be regain eligibility. And then the second proposal is at the, basically the beginning of the third week of the nine weeks, if they're not failing two, then they could regain eligibility. But it would be easy to have a third proposal saying that, like originally, that if you do not, if you got two Fs at the nine weeks and you're ineligible for the next nine weeks-
That was the original proposal that we tweaked. I felt like if we had a situation where a kid, that you do lose the kid then, if you say you have no hope of getting that, getting that F pulled up. My objective is to eliminate the Fs, period. But with that being said, if the athletic program is what's keeping these kids in school and we're making efforts to correct the Fs, then we would recheck in second nine weeks to give them an opportunity to pull that F up. With the goal of not having any Fs for our kids, but, so there are two proposals before you guys.
Mr. Dogg's got a question, but I know, Coach is gonna ask his question. If you go with the second proposal, is that after that third nine weeks, is that starting over with the first nine weeks? Let's say if they fail the first nine weeks, when they get to the third week, is that average with the first nine weeks, or are they starting over at the second nine weeks?
I see your question, that's a good question.
I mean, Coach is gonna ask the question, so just-
They have to be, in my opinion, they have to be at a point for passing for the semester, not passing for the nine weeks.
Okay.
Because if you had a 60 in the first nine weeks, a 65 is not gonna be sufficient. It's a passing mark, but you're still gonna fail the course at the end of the turn.
Yes, sir.
So now it's a 70, and it'll be a sliding scale based on the first nine weeks final grade.
So we would say that that would be an average of the two to make sure they're passed? Okay.
Yeah, otherwise it's foolish.
Yeah, that's, I always just wanna make sure.
So, can I get a, just a feel from the board as it relates to where y'all are with that option one, option two, with those adjustments being made through our administrative department?
But I lean towards option two. I would like to hear from Dr. Peyton, if you have any comments from an administrative level, from a school level, if-
I think most of the coaches pretty much said what I was gonna say. I think I used the example that Mr. Rodoffich used on Mondays. Every Monday, as a leadership team, we run our at-risk seniors. And this past Monday or Tuesday, two of our highest performing students came up as at-risk. And when we dug deeper, we realized that they were at-risk because they had gone to college days and they had zeros in the gradebook. They're not athletes, but if they were athletes, they would've been ineligible. So that was one, you know, one concern that we've had for a while. Also, as Coach Wright, Coach Wright mentioned, our student, we had some students in English, and they were doing a research paper. They had knocked themselves in a failing situation before the research paper, but when they're doing the research paper, they may not take as many grades, so they were failing, and throughout the whole research paper process, they would've continued to fail because the teacher wasn't putting grades in, because they were doing, obviously because they were doing a research paper. So what Coach Wright did, and I did, what the children came to Coach Wright and was like, "She's not putting grades in, but we wanna play." But Coach Wright did not want students to think that he can magically wake them up and let them play, so he came to me and we came to an agreement. He said, "What we're gonna do is, I'm gonna suspend them for half a game, or I'm gonna suspend them, because I want them to know that they shouldn't have gotten themselves in that situation. However, we don't wanna keep them not playing for the whole duration of the research paper." Also, what Coach High mentioned about the higher-level classes, we don't want to discourage productive struggle. What we're having a situation, we're having a situation where the kids are taking honors classes and they're taking AP classes, it is okay to productively struggle throughout the nine weeks. Eventually, they're gonna pull it off, but if we get to where we're dinging them and they can't play sports because they're productively struggling this week, they're not gonna want to take the honors classes and the AP classes, and we don't wanna discourage that. So, but just to answer your question, I do think option two would probably be my, the one I would select as well.
That's true.
Well, I think we have administrative code to put in the gradebook of N M to take care of a kid's absence, and it doesn't figure in as a zero. So I think that's, that's an issue that we can, we can fix pretty simply. As far as the standard, and please forgive me, if I stick out, please just tell me. I think if you look at where we are in trying to close the gap with minorities and, and close the gap as a state, that's where we compare with America, we've gotta be tough on standards. We've got to hold people accountable. And it's, it's good for kids to have the esteem that they achieve and the area that they're good in, and, so we gotta have a balance there. But we gotta keep the focus on what we're trying to do. I'm a Mississippian now, I was born in Alabama, and I'm a Mississippian. And when I travel and I pull out my driver's license to rent a car and people say, "You guys wearing shoes now." That just kinda ticks me the wrong way. And when I look at how Mississippi ranks in the United States as far as education, that's not a good thing. You can't improve, you can't advance, you cannot go forward about doing, doing the same thing over and over again. And the reason I'm in this business is because I wanna make a difference. So, we gotta have a balance, but we gotta stay focused on what we're trying to do as educators, and that's giving kids the ability to be successful in life. I could go home and talk to kids in high school that I went to high school with, I wasn't the greatest athlete, and they were superstars, they were the community top. And right now, they're in their 40s and 50s and some 60s, and they're still talking about when they were 16, 17 years old, because that's, that's where they plateaued. So when we're doing these things, let's keep, we said, negotiate, let's keep the main thing the main thing. We want these kids not only to be successful in high school, but when they leave high school, that's a lot of years ahead of them, and we wanna make sure we do the best for them when we do it.
I agree. I mean, I, I think if, even if we go with either one of the recommendations from Mr. Freeman and the superintendent. In my belief, from the policies that I've read around, from other school districts, from the policies that I've read from other colleges, we are still gonna have the strictest policy, or one of the strictest policies you can have, on an athletic and academic standpoint. So, I'm in favor of tweaking in the way the superintendent, Mr. Freeman, has suggested, but I'm a board member, I'm not a coach. And so, I also want to give folks like Coach McQueen some discretion here to have higher standards if they want, because what we're doing, right, is the MHSA standard is the floor, and then we have raised our floor, and I think even under these tweaking of these new standards, our floor is still much higher than the MHSA floor. And we wanna give the discretion to a Coach McQueen that if he wants to raise his floor higher than that floor, then we, he can do that too. So I don't want a handcuff, I think it's still fine if a coach wants to have higher standards to me, but I think, I think this is still a very high floor and it's, and it's a good suggestion. But I, but I am interested to know, specifically, I know we got examples and comments, I wanna know from coaches, are y'all in favor of this, this recommendation or not?
All right, I'm in favor of the second proposal.
Yes, second one.
The only, the only change I would make is change the words from pass to earn, and change the words from four out of five classes to credits, which will align with the language-
Again, you gotta remember that at the nine-week mark, there's not a credit earned in semester-long classes.
Unless it's half credits, and we had several kids that had four half-credit classes.
Right, but if it's a semester-long class, you don't get a half credit for passing the first half of- first half of piles you want.
We can, we can treat that first nine weeks like it's a semester. You know, like we do at the end of the, they don't earn the credit, but they're on their way to earn that credit. So if the semester ended at the end of the first nine weeks, you would assume that they had an 82, they would earn that credit. That's what I'm saying. If you call it credits instead of classes.
We can, I'm sure we can work on that.
I mean, it's just, I know that's the word. Because you have some people that'll, sorry, Mr. McNeil, lawyer up and try to split those halves. You know, it's just, if you, if you have clear language, you know, it's always easier.
We can work with it.
So Board, option two, you want us to put a proposal before you drop the two?
I would like to do that. The coaches live that every day. They're the ones, you know, taking care of these kids on the most fundamental level. If that's what they say they need to be successful, let's give it to them.
And would you like us to also include the language about coaches who choose to have higher standards?
Absolutely. I want them to have that autonomy as well. And then a young man, a woman knows contractually, when they enter into that program with that coach, that these are, are the expectations of that coach. And if you don't like it, don't come here, you know, or don't participate in this, this athletic or activity. Yeah, I want them to have that autonomy as well to raise, not to lower.
Want to close on that? Would I close? Chris Johnson, Smith.
Thank y'all for what you did. We honestly appreciate y'all.
All right. The next thing is, from an athletic supplement standpoint, Mr. Johnson had requested that we look at our middle school sports and do not currently have assistant coaches for team sports. And if we could look at a supplement schedule for those coaches, we'll probably have to do a little bit more mathematics to make sure that we are proportionately correct in our numbers. But this is something that we put together yesterday. At this point, our cost of that, let's bring, sixteen thousand at the base.
Sixteen, sixteen.
Yeah, sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars at the base. That's within the existing budget that we have. So is, is that okay to add that assistant supplement in there?
And I guess just for a little background for the, the other board members, and I'll try to keep it as short and sweet as possible, but there are a few middle school sports that only have one supplement attached to them, right? So one, not only do we have just a single individual trying to coach, practice, train, keep up with 20-plus kids, in some cases, you know, travel with these 20-plus kids. But it was a perfect example, at the end of this last season, had one of these sports where a coach was sick and they could not attend school that day. So they said, I'm going to go to the doctor and then, you know, I'll come and get the bus and, and take the kids or whatever, well, you can't. But the rules, if you weren't at, at school, just the same way as it is for a player, right? So now we're rescheduling games and we're moving district schedules around where, you know, sixteen thousand dollars a year, seventeen thousand dollars a year, so a drop in the bucket in my mind. One, from a liability standpoint, if you have an injury and we've got, you know, 20-plus students on the field, they're going to say, a lot of them, we only have one person out there. And these teachers, I don't blame them if they're not getting paid for these extra things, they're not just going to volunteer and stay. So I just feel like it's a very small dollar amount to safeguard ourselves from a liability standpoint and to make it easier on the, the staff trying to, trying to perform these functions. We're holding our coaches more accountable for outcomes, where we're trying to go, and I'm in full support of that as well. But just like an educator, an administrator, if I'm going to hold you accountable for your outcomes, I need to give you what you need to be successful before I just judge you like that. So I want to make sure that we've got everybody, adequate staff, to perform those duties.
You all okay with that? Is that good? All right, the other part of that is the potential for us to start hiring some parent professionals, because it is going to be difficult to get that many folks to come into assistant jobs. It's hard to even fill some of the coaching jobs for us sometimes, because we pay a very good salary and it limits what people want to do extra. You know, a thousand dollars, twelve hundred doesn't mean as much to them if they have that great salary. So parent professionals is something that we'll be looking at as well. There are two things, one thing that I think is crucial that I wanted to bring forward for the Board, and I think this is something that can be very advantageous to the school district. Of course, it will be experimented in its first year. If you look, it's a secondary badge system that's in the faculty. This all comes back to student management disciplines, all those, all those things. Every year, we do athletic packets. And we believe that by putting identification on our students in our schools, that every child would have identification. And that at the beginning of the year, we would charge a $20 fee, and we still haven't structured, what would we call it, or how would we call it, for that identification. That identification, for that $20 fee, all students from seventh through 12th grade would get into every athletic event, home event, in Pascagoula and in Goche for $20, and their ID would be their ticket to get into the games. And that would also help us to monitor who's in the student section whenever we have ball games, especially in our football games. So helps us for that management, also helps us for identification of students on our campuses. We have the dollars in our existing budget to do this. I've had Kelly do some research, and we do have to have a hardship policy for someone who couldn't afford the $20, which would be part of what we do. But we're going to very strongly encourage that everyone does this. It's a $60,000 accumulation of funds that we would divide and have to, number one, cover back our costs. But I do have the money to do this right now. And even if we don't accept the $20 fee for every student, I'd still like permission to move forward with getting identification for all of our students who are going to be in our schools. And that would be lanyard identification.
So if we move them forward with this, would that be like a daily expectation when you come to school, you have to have an ID card hanging around your neck?
Some districts have already gone to that. I know that Ocean Springs does it at their campuses, but yes, it would be the expectation. And we have a replacement charge for them.
I'm sure there would be like a policy in place as far as replacing it.
Right, that's right. Maybe like a $2 or something, replacement charge, and, yes.
Are, are you saying that you would require them to wear a lanyard when they come on campus for an athletic event?
In order, like, if you come to a football game, that, that ID card, if you're kicking into the ballgame.
But, but could, could you just go up to the ticket office, just like at a college, and say, student ID, put it back in the pocket? You don't, you're not saying you have to walk in.
We want to make sure that kid is identified on campus, by way, or the way, where it's going. That way, it also helps to separate people that aren't supposed to be on campus from kids who are supposed to be on campus. That's another way of monitoring students.
But we're not going to require them to wear the lanyard around their neck during athletic events?
No, they can, I mean, they can show their ticket.
They just have it in their pocket.
But they can't get in the athletic section without that identification. Because what you have is you'll have kids from Osborn come over, get a student ticket that don't have an ID, and they end up in your student section, and you have commotion from students that shouldn't be there. And it also could help us to exclude the very young children getting in the student section that sometimes find their way in there. And we're trying to be, student section's a very difficult area to maintain good behavior. We don't have fights and things like that, but we do have some kids that get a little bit rowdy. And we want to be able to make sure we can identify those students and make sure that they're supposed to be where they are, and not have parents intermingling with that group in that section, you know, give them their own space.
Does this mean that a Pascagoula or Goche unit could cross the river to go?
Absolutely. If there's a Pascagoula, Goche, have a rival game, this gets all the kids to the rival game. You can have, load up the gyms, load up the baseball field.
But what I'm, what I'm saying, like in football, but we wouldn't, if it was a rival game, we wouldn't want the Pascagoula going to Goche.
Right, they'll have different colored IDs. Yeah, they'll have different colored IDs.
But say if it's not a rival game, say if a Pascagoula kid wanted to go to a Goche game, they...
They'd be able to sit in that section.
Okay.
Typically, be friends, any of friends, want to get together, go to a game. So, y'all okay with that?
I'm fine.
How about the fee concept?
Yeah, as long as we put the, the hardship policy in place, the numbers, if you're going to get technical, would be few, but there would be some, that it would be a legitimate hardship for, as long as we have something like that in place where we're taking care of those students and then, you know, fee schedule for replacement, and just make sure it's rolled out, that, that everybody understands these expectations. I think registration, I know a lot we do online now, just want to make sure with the, the parents that are going to be involved, because ultimately, we're responsible for this stuff, right? That we do make it our business to ensure that, that they see this coming and they understand what's going to be going on with it.
And that's why we're trying to get a little approval now, so we can begin that process. Because all of our high school people will be meeting with all of our students face-to-face over the summer.
And as far as the software goes, if you, I'm just thinking, talk to the thing, like, oh, get a replacement badge, give it to my friend. So if you lose your ID and you're replacing it, is there any way, I wonder, in the software to deactivate that, where it wouldn't work at a game? You couldn't scan it and get in? I just see that maybe be an issue with people just saying, oh, just give me $15, I'm going to get a replacement, and then we both got one.
Right.
You know, I'm just wondering if there's a way to monitor that, to deactivate those.
And at this point, we didn't have an activation or a scanner on it, because it wasn't going to be used as a bunch thing.
Right.
It would just be, it would just be an ID, just like...
There's a picture.
My only other thing, I want to just make sure, when we're talking about where they're wearing or how they're wearing, I don't want to limit them to say you got to wear this around your neck on a lanyard, because everyone's different. Even in my job, I, most people wear stuff around the neck. I don't like wearing mine. I wear it on my belt loop, so don't want to limit them to saying you got to have it around your neck.
Yeah, clearly visible, et cetera. But everybody, I'm good with that, too.
Okay, so we're good?
Yeah, I, I think one challenge is going to be implementation of it. Because that first home football game's going to be so close to when school is, trying to get all the hardships processed and the money collected, pictures, and then badges. I mean, it's just going to be a very tight...
We'll try to get that done during the registration period.
Yeah.
We'll have to tell, we already talked about at a special table, that that's the sole purpose of that place, and all that ID is made that day. Every kid that registers will have the IDs, and they'll be made that day, whether the $20 is there or not, because this student's still got to have an ID. So that, we'll have all that logistics worked out. All right, quickly on dress code. Mr. Irving had brought up jackets. If you'll look in the packet that I gave you, it's a full packet. It's the, ready for unpack. Yeah, I will do a get it to look at those related jackets. Okay, so Mr. West and Ms. Damon, address all of our dress code things. Ms. Damon, would you like to talk about the changes, the shifts made, specifically to jackets and socks and belts?
Okay, jackets are basically, we just, what it said for fifth through 12th grade was that it was basically a principal discretion, whether they could wear them or not in the building. And there, I will tell you, every principal has a different discretion level. So, and I will tell you, as having two children, mine wear a sweatshirt every day of their life. Okay, so, and that solves the whole issue with the jacket thing, except for my one who has a Letterman's jacket, and then that's the other cool thing. But we just decided that to put it on there is just jackets, as long as they follow through the policy, which means they can't have anything offensive on them, they have to unbutton, unzip, whatever, from top to bottom, so they can't be those kind that get real, like gigantic and come over your head. But the issue is, if you're asked to take it off and you refuse to take it off, it becomes a discipline issue, plain and simple, wherever that may be, whether it's in the classroom, whether it's in the cafeteria, or wherever, if you're having, you know, there's an issue, because kids will, we all know, that's kind of, becomes their cocoon and they get all up in it. So, you know, if a teacher walks by and says, take your jacket off, hang it on the back of your chair, and then we get into, that's just a discipline issue, that's not a jacket issue, so handle it on that, on a case-by-case basis with that. Belts, we just added navy and white. Socks, we just basically said solid color, we're not going to, we're going to just move away from, because we had every, we had a lot of color anyway.
I was going to lunch yesterday and I saw somebody running across the street with one solid red sock and one solid blue sock.
Works.
Are we good with that?
I don't care.
Solid. I just didn't know if they had to match.
Shoes, basically going closed toe, closed heel, no lights, wheels, music, spikes, et cetera. Because I, when I would get a phone call in the middle of the summer, what colors can they wear? And it took me 20 minutes to list the colors, and then they'd go, but there's a little bit of green, we can't wear green, sorry. So we're just moving away from all of that. Closed toe, closed heel, done, shoes.
But they can't light up.
They can't light up, they can't play music, they can't have wheels, our spikes are obscene.
So the one shoe that's still going to come into question there is, if somebody flips the, the heel strap down on a set of Crocs, are we going to call that closed heel?
No, that is not a closed heel.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Because I know that's the, that's the one that ends up in, in question. I agree with the interpretation.
A closed heel means it is a closed heel.
All right.
What I'm wearing is a closed heel, but not a closed toe. She's, I think yours, is yours closed all the way on the end?
Yeah, mine's closed heel.
Yeah. So, I mean, you know, it's basically a titty shoe, a loafer, those types of things.
Ms. Damon?
Yes.
Did we address boots?
Yes.
Basically, we just said closed toe, closed heel. The rest of it, so.
They can wear...
That way, you can quit fussing over what's a boot, what's a high top, and what's a, move on from there. Close toe, closed heel.
You probably get postures out.
Well, I will tell you, I'm just, I don't pay that much, personally, I don't pay that much attention. Are you here? Are you paying attention to what's happening in class?
Right.
Great, let's move on, okay?
Yes.
You know, I mean, there's certain things that are going to catch my eye, but I would, I would be a terrible teacher in a dress code like this, because I'd be like, oh, they didn't have a belt on? I didn't even pay attention to it. They had a red shirt on, we were good, we were going.
Just for my clarification, jackets, jackets and sweatshirt hoodies are two different?
They are.
Okay, so this is not saying that we can't wear school sweatshirt, school...
Your hoodies, and all that stays the same. We did, if you spirit wear, which used to be T-shirts, we just changed it to spirit wear, which that covers your long sleeve, your short sleeve, your sweatshirts, all of that kind of stuff. It's basically just took out, just to make it easy, white, navy, blue, red, and any other solid color. So, because I have, Beach has some turquoise color, y'all have yellow, somebody else will have another color. Any other, somebody wants gray. I don't like gray, because I just sprays it's gray, but y'all love gray, whatever.
I like gray.
So it gives the school the choice of any other color, and it just have a site-approved logo. And by site-approved logo means the panther, the P, the gator, the G, the, you know, gators, the, those are your site-approved. Yes.
Just a minute, one more thing. Thank you, you cleared a lot of...
Yes.
The hoodies with the hood. We don't allow them, we have cameras all over the school, and when the kids put their hood over their head, it's kind of hard to tell who's who. So can we address that in the policy? Or should that just be a facility?
Well, man, I don't think that this issue was saying that you can't wear your hood.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have an issue. Hoodies have been there forever. It, I mean, that's been, from the original policy, hoodies were in there, you know, with a hood or without, sweatshirts with a hood or without a hood. But I have no issue with us writing in there that you cannot wear your, do we want it to be on campus or in the building?
I'll say in the building, personally. Because when they're outside and it's 30 degrees, okay, but when you're in the building. But, Mr. Tulliver, another thing at the Academy, what we're looking at doing next year is just going to ordering the Goche Gator sweatshirts.
Without the hood.
Without the hood. Because the hood is becoming a major behavioral issue as well. And when you're constantly telling a child, take your hood off, you know, take your hood off, take your hood off, and then they're just doing it.
Yeah. I'm open to...
You know, we want that verbiage in there.
Walgreens sell with the hoods. Should we allow those?
So I can't say they can't, but what we'll sell, our PTO will sell, we're going to stop selling, offering the hoodies to try to fix a lot of our problem, because that's where most of the parents order them from anyway. We're just going to order sweatshirts next year.
And to the kids' defense, it becomes a habit for them.
Yes.
But it's security.
So, do you, we can add that verbiage in there?
Yes.
For the school bus as well, because we do have cameras on the school bus as well. That verbiage just won't speak because it's not with the hood.
Not having it on in the building or on the school bus? The hood on in the building.
That's what you might want to tell them.
Because I do know lots, because sports utilizes those a lot, too. And so, like, I mean, a lot of those young men and women, they will wear a sports hoodie and then a practice T-shirt that's given to them by the school, too. And to come in and say, "Take that hoodie off," now you're sitting there in a short sleeve, dry.
No, yeah, you're just basically telling, "Take the hoodie off." We'll have to work the language exactly, but basically you just want the hood to be hanging.
Yes.
Not take the sweat, the actual item off, off your head.
And only, the only time at school that they're told to take their hoodie off is when it's not school-appropriate. A lot of them have all kinds of different wording all over it, that it's nothing about Go Shea Gators or blue, you know, they're approved colors, and sometimes that can become...
Okay, we'll, we'll add that language in before it goes to the, for the hand of changes to go in to y'all.
Mr. Irving, does that cover what your concerns were?
That, I just wanted to make sure, jackets, like I said, most kids now, oh, they only wear hoodies or sweatshirts, but I, I don't like the option where you can just, like I said, I got people wearing jackets every day at my job, and you can walk in and at the discretion of the principal that they just say, "Hey, I don't want you to have a jacket on, take it off."
And this weather this year, typically, we've been able to kind of say it's done and over with, and this weather this year has not been like that at all. So, like, when you thought it was gonna be done, it continued to be cold.
Excuse, just to make sure I'm clear on the jackets. So, we're saying the kids can wear the jackets in school, inside the building, but the principal has the discretion to say no.
Principal, teacher, any, says, if there's a reason, take it off.
Well, hold up.
And they have to be on, for jackets, yes.
Yeah, the way I'm, the way I'm understanding is they have discretion if it's being a discipline problem, like you got a kid doing stuff with the jacket, and you say, "Take it off," not just take it off because you're walking with it.
Or you have a reason in the caf, like I know y'all don't allow them in the cafeteria, so I think that's the same rule.
So, we're allowing kids to wear the jackets inside the building, it's not an issue.
You say, I mean...
I have no...
Okay. And like, I know they have a rule in the cafeteria and that kind of stuff, so that's, that becomes, if that's the rule, again, you take it off. If you don't take it off, it's a discipline issue.
Do you saw you get Mr. Jackson finished? Guys, if we can look at BG in your binder, we include a air-conditioned bus. I think since two thousand and five, we have increased our air-conditioned bus about fifty-seven percent. Every bus we replace, we replace an air-conditioned bus. Also, within that, we have vehicle inventory, and we have dust inventory that's air. That's more for future review. It coincides with our strategic plan as well, that's a part of our strategic plan. Do y'all have any questions around transportation or vehicle inventories? Just primarily information.
Yeah, I have one question, just, this is not that much related to this, but it is a little bit. All right, so we have cameras on buses, we have cameras in schools, I would assume we don't have audio, because it's too expensive and probably a privacy issue.
Some places you do and some places you don't.
Where do we have audio?
Buses do.
Buses have audio.
Buses do have audio.
Most of the front office with the cameras, it's literally over the front desk in the offices, those have audio.
Okay.
High classrooms have audio.
Yeah.
Guidance offices have audio.
Behavior classes.
Gyms have audio.
Okay, who's monitoring all this? Who keeps them?
Well, we have a, we have a console on every campus where principals have access to watch every monitor if they want to. Typically, the way we use that technology in this district is if an incident occurs, we run it back to hard drive and we find exactly what happened. As far as us having anyone who just sits in front of a TV and looks for something, we don't do that. Same thing on buses. If we have an issue that occurs on a bus, there's a camera on that bus three, a hundred eighty days a year. The only time anybody's gonna look at that camera is if an incident occurs on the bus. And with that, we're very restricted in who can look at it. If children misbehave and a sexual man are on a bus, I'll view it, the type of transportation doesn't view it, my law enforcement doesn't view it, but they know that there's something that allegedly occurs, it comes straight to Mr. Sessions, and that's the only person. We don't, because we don't expose, we won't expose that privacy issue. And we've only had that happen a very few times in the district. But even me as a superintendent, I don't look at it. I have to be made to look at it through a, we have to get it to trial level before I even will look at it. Because what used to happen was, you'd have that chain of evidence, that you have transportation supervisor look at it and say, "Hey, law enforcement, you can look at it." And then they, and then it'd be, you'd sit around the principal, right? And so, we don't do that anymore. That's not the way it's done. So, that's, that's the access that you have. Now, if it's a fight or something like that, then transportation supervisor looks at it, he deals with the discipline on the bus, and then it goes straight to the principal of the school. If it's a low-level offense. If it's something higher level, then it works all the way up to us. And we're very strict. And the other thing is, we are looking at upgrading all the cameras on all hundred buses, where we'll have seven different places, including exterior. So, when people try to run around our buses and do stuff like that, they'll be called. And we've got that as a potential budgetary item, but we also think we may have some funding that we can pull on that this year.
How often are we running functionality checks on that stuff?
Well, pretty, pretty frequently, because we repair and replace consistently whenever we have an issue. When the principal says, "Hey, we got a bad spot in the building or something," then we try to fix that location. But we do have a comprehensive system of cameras when you have forty buildings and a hundred offices. We have a lot of, I mean, that's continuous work.
A couple of them, and, and I think that it's, it's good what we do, it's a big spotlight for the district, a bragging point, if you want to call it that, how we've leveraged technology to be able to do those things. And I know, of late, there have just been a couple of times where the integrity of our camera system was called into question during some executive sessions when, and I guess that's my thing, I agree that we, that we shouldn't allow just anybody to view it, but when we discipline a child, and then that child says, "This is not the way that happened, we have cameras to verify that," and then the parent comes and says, "They said they didn't, it should be on camera." And then we say, "Well, that camera wasn't working," that puts us at a disadvantaged position. And I know things break.
Right, they're mechanical.
So, as long as we do have a system to stay on top of that kind of stuff.
And one thing, too, Mr. Johnson, we have a contact with family security, and so whenever a principal gets in contact with Jim Hutchins, he's the one that actually goes and views if it gets replaced or...
Gotcha. And I assume the kids on buses, they know there are cameras on there, because that would serve as a great deterrent, right?
Well, you would think that.
Unless, unless you're thinking that would be a lot more...
Oh, they all know there's cameras, they didn't think.
All right, so, no, it's not very, all right, so let's get to communication devices real quick. Mr. McNeil brought communication devices up, because we know, it's a strange year. They can talk to you about why we do what we do and why we think where we are is the right place right now, but they can bring up your concerns.
Yeah, so I just have had parents and teachers and administrators bring up our cell phone policy to me. In reading it and talking and getting feedback, it seems like what we have is, we kind of, I mean, we're just not, we're not following the policy, in other words. We, we, maybe what we're actually doing in practicality, in practice, may be a good policy, but that's not the policy. So, it sounds like we just may need to change, tweak the policy to do what we're doing in practice, which I think the policy is, you can't bring a cell phone on campus, period. End of story, lose your cell phone, okay? My concern is, say, say you're a ninth grade kid, tenth grade kid, you can't drive yet, you get to school at seven o'clock in the morning, you go to a JV baseball game, then you gotta stay for the high school baseball game, your mama doesn't see you from six-thirty in the morning until ten o'clock at night, she has no, no way to really get a hold of you, and a lot of kids that are in ninth and tenth grade have cell phones. It seems fine to me that you be able to take your cell phone to school, you be able to contact your mama at seven o'clock, tell her how you did at the JV baseball game, tell her you about to go to the high school baseball game in St. Martin, you know, whatever. And, but I think, and I think in practice, it sounds like to me what we are doing, is if you don't bring your cell phone out in class, if you're not showing it around and people don't see it, then we're not, we're not looking for it. We're not going around confiscating people's cell phones, we're not going through book bags, that type of stuff. So, to me, it sounds like we just need to tweak the policy a little bit, to put the policy as to what we're doing in practice. But I'd like to get feedback from people over the ground that know more.
I'd like to take a crack at that one real quick, because I've, I've got one that, that fits the mold that you just laid out right there, a perfect example, grade and everything. And, and my child has brought a cell phone with her to school every day since approximately sixth grade. My instruction to her as a parent has always been, one, understand what you're doing, okay? And I know why you, you need it, and it is a lot of times for that communication with me, like you're saying. Understand what you're doing, one, and the possibility ramifications these actions could have. And, you know, just because it's okay in Ms. Damon's class for three out of four or nine weeks, when she has a bad weekend and comes in on a Monday, and that was one thing I always loved about...
He's so true.
About Dr. Bounds, because he would say that on the educator and the student level, that we need to have consistency in our application of these rules, right? Don't, don't bring home into work or into the classroom as a student, one or the other. But I would tell her, you know, Ms. Damon comes in with her behind on her shoulders on a Monday morning because she had a bad weekend, and it's been okay for three, nine weeks, and it gets taken on the fourth, don't come crying to me about I'm doing it because it's been okay. My issue is, as a parent, and I think we've seen in executive session here recently, some of the things that are, that can happen with cell phones on campuses, regardless of the policies we have in place, the more loopholes, if we want to call them that, the more you can, if, when and only, I think we're opening ourselves up for more problems. If we had a rash of appeals and disciplinary issues coming to the administration, coming to us over cell phones being in the classroom, I would be more apt to entertain a modification. But I think right now, it gives the administration and it gives the educators the teeth that they need when they're needed. I don't know, I hadn't had anybody call me and say, you know, my kid was calling me after our, you know, in the last quarter of a sporting event to tell me they were gonna need a ride in twenty minutes, and they got their stuff taken up. It was the one whose, whose phone went off in the middle of a test, or who was on IG Live streaming the substitute teacher. Yeah, that person's cell phone got confiscated, and it should have, in my opinion, right? I, I do think it's another one of those, just like we talked about earlier with the autonomy thing and giving them the ability to act when they need to, to act. If we open it up and say, "Well, these things are all right in this place at this time," it's just gonna get pushed more and more and more.
Matt, let me kind of talk, I, I agree with you. I have two kids, closed ears, PHS, have their phones every single day, okay? I mean, I could find friends right now and one pink and one seeing a picture. And I'm the same exact way. You know what the rule is, I don't want to hear one, don't, one tear fall from your head when you make the mistake and it gets caught. I don't want to hear that. You know, I'm the exact same way. You, you know the rule, you know where I'm gonna stand on that, and no, I'm not buying another one for you. So, you know, but my, this is my issue on the, if you relax it to, it's okay to have it, but not have it on. Because that's kind of what you want the policy to kind of say, because that's kind of, I mean, we all know, nine hundred kids at high school have them somewhere in their backpacker, backpacker pocket. The issue to the teacher becomes, the cell phone is seen, and then it becomes, "It went on. You gonna take my cell phone, it went on." Teacher's gonna eventually go, "I, I don't care what you do with that cell phone, because I'm not fighting with a teenager over whether your phone is on or off." You know, and that's, that become, it's just very clear now. If I see the phone, it's clear line, phone's done. If the phone makes a noise and I have to investigate to find the phone, very clear. You're not allowed to have it. You have the phone, it's done. If we get into a debate whether the phone is on or off, there's no, that, that teacher has no, at that point, because that kid can get that phone off, your kids aren't there yet, just wait. Hand me the phone. Okay, here, you have no idea what they were just doing, because they made fourteen clicks and deleted fourteen. Done. Correctly, nothing on it anymore.
I, I'm with you. I don't think that's the only potential solution, though. I think George County's policy is, you can have it at breakfast, you can't, we can't see it.
Can't do.
We can't see it after that. Like, we can't see it at the class, that type of thing. But here's another thing, like, what if I'm an AP teacher and I want to, kid asks a question in class, I'm like, "Look it up, tell us, tell us..."
They have Chromebooks right there. Every, every class has a Chromebook right in front of them.
Every core classroom in our district, every subject area classroom, the children have a Chromebook in front of them.
We just put our teachers in a predicament of, you basically just, if cellphone, if we say it's okay to bring the cell phone on campus, you have opened it up to the cell phones are there, they're gonna be used, they're gonna be taking pictures, they're gonna be showing stuff, they're gonna be doing anything but what they're supposed to be doing with the cell phone at that point.
But the major point that I want to make as a parent, as a father of three little daughters, and I've got a teacher who's slapped four out because we're not following the dang policy that we put in that you're worried to confiscate the phone first, because that kid's gonna say, "I wasn't on my phone."
Right.
"You're picking on me." And mom's gonna come and say, "My child would never lie to me. We're building an administrative mountain of work for administrative, we're supposed to focus on school." The research is all over the place, and I think Mr. Smollett's got some, and I'll let him get to it, but here's my number one issue. You can have it at breakfast, you can have it at lunch. Those are unmonitored, unfiltered opportunities for my three little girls who will be in this school district, two of whom are already in this school district, for some kid who watches pornography on a regular basis at their house, to take the innocence from my children by sitting right next to them in the lunchroom. And that teacher that's been telling these same kids, "Put your phone up, put your phone up," in Ocean Springs, folks, they'll, if they're honest with you, they'll tell you, "It's a disaster." St. Martin will tell you the same thing, and they've got a rule against it at St. Martin, but they still let them have them. But the issue is that I can't get my child's innocence back, and I'm not willing to provide that. Secondly, if this is an eighteen-year-old who's exposed in pornography, then we've got a, a legal issue. If we have a testing issue arise, we're gonna have to invalidate the entire classroom and test on state testing and be reported to state Mississippi for disruption. Whenever my administrative team goes into a building for testing, our phones all sit in a basket before we even go down the hall, because you get suspended if you disrupt tests as an adult in this school district, because we're that tight on trying to make sure we do everything right. So, and again, my thing is, I look at my own girls and I think about, do I want them to be exposed to something of this magnitude? And I don't, I don't, and I don't want, I don't want to give that opportunity for somebody to do that, because right now, if they're exposed to it, I'm gonna be very upset, you know, with the rule being as the rule is. But right now, kids know I'm not supposed to have this thing at school, and they do what they do, and we're not looking for it. And when parents tell us we're picking on their kids about discipline, I'm like, or my principal's picking on a kid, I'm like, "They have a thousand kids in that school, they don't want to add another six pages of paperwork on a referral." But, Mr., I, I did want to let y'all hear from my administrator.
Well, let me tell you, well, I, as a teacher, I acted the same way. If I even saw a phone, said kid was, I'm zipping his bookbag, and that thing slid out a little bit and I was walking by, that was an accident, I just acted like I didn't see it. But if that thing rang, or if I saw that kid down there with those fingers going, I'd kind of flip right there, if I knew that he was texting. Those are the only two times I took a phone, when it rang or if they were texting.
And I think, give it to you real quick, Stuart, but I think it, right now, gives a sort of positive way to appear fresh, too, because if you do have that one kid whose phone does go off in class, teacher's gonna say, "Who has phone?", and then nobody says anything, admin's gonna come down there and say, "Either that phone's gonna surface, or I'm gonna search every one of you." And then at that point in time, we're looking and saying, "I'm gonna beat you like you are, you know." And you don't get that phone now, then give it up, because all twenty of ours are not getting taken up because you made a mistake. And then, we get it that way, too.
Yeah, I would love to talk about this. I'd love to talk about anything, but I'd be happy to talk about this. I've got some information we compiled with you board members. be happy to talk about this. I've got some information we compiled with you, board members.
I'll get y'all a nice one.
This is the fancy spot.
Oh, scrub, don't get the, the good stuff here.
And so.
More problems than they've done up today.
And so y'all know, I mean, from the feedback I'm getting, I'm fine with, the question now to me is, do we, do we want a policy that stays the same, or do we want a policy where it says, it's kind of like a courtroom, right? You know everybody has it, you allow people to have it in a courtroom, but it cannot ring, and you cannot see it. Is that, are you fine with that policy? I mean, it's really one of those two. Or you still want a policy where there's nobody has it on campus, but we're not enforcing it. I mean, that's just not what we're doing.
Here's, here's the way I see it. The policy doesn't require us to search.
Right.
So we are enforcing the policy.
But you can't search.
And we do at times.
If I'm a teacher, I can. There's nothing that stops me from calls.
Right. There's reason, there has to be a reason.
We're grading papers, we look up, and there's a phone, and everybody's like.
Everything's about phones.
Okay, you can normally tell, just keep with your head down, the noise came from that direction. You know, so I can at least say, all right, I'm about to call admin to come search these roads. You know, and these people might be off the hook. Or you may just say, we're going to search the whole room. But, you know, the way, the way it works is, the policy says they can't be there. If I don't see it, and I don't hear it, to me, it's not there.
It's not there. Right. That's how I, because anything that you say that it's okay, it becomes impossible to manage. It's an impossibility to manage if we say it's okay. It's okay if it's not off, it's okay if I don't see it, because then you didn't really, you're, you just, you get into an argument that eventually, they're going to have it a few times, and then they're going to give up on even having the argument. And then you've just opened it up to the phones are there, they're wide open, they're there all the time. Teacher doesn't have time to have that, you know, it's very clear right now, I see it, if I hear, you know.
We've all, as administrators, joked about the policy, because it says you can have them at after-school events. And your kid that's got on the bus at 6:30, and is that the ballgame with the cellphone? Miraculous.
It just seems like surely there's some language we could come up to actually put into place what we're practicing, right?
Right. I mean, well, I mean.
Because a kid.
That's a slippery slope.
Right. And the reason is, because the kid already, the kid, some kids will already have those disagreements with you. You're not taking, you can do anything you want to, Jimmy, but you're not taking this. And I mean, I think they will tell you that. They will.
I think the policy, we, we know the kids have their phones. The kids know they have their phone, the parents know the kids have their phone. All the things that we ask, that we protect the learning environment. If the phone goes off, if the kids are using the phone to text answers, porn is being distributed, that's, that's, that's not good for our learning environment. So, the policy's good. We don't search them. If it goes off, we take the phone. And I thank the board and the district staff, they've given us a little bit more leverage if the kid refuses. There are kids like, give me your left arm. No, you can have my left arm, but I'm keeping my phone.
Cut it off.
So, we have policy now, if the kid refuses, we have another step to go to. It is, is concise, it's to the point, and we can go on with education. There have been times, we spent an hour, hour and a half trying to get a phone from a kid.
And I will tell you, I get phone calls from parents, you know, they're all upset because the phone got taken, and they've got to have the phone, it's their work phone, it's their grandma's phone, it's the neighbor's phone, it's, you know, whoever's phone, don't, you know, it's relevant. And they will clearly say to me, I know what the rule is, but, I mean, everybody knows what the rule is. They just want the exception to the rule, you know, because there's some logical reason for the exception to the rule. You know, I had a family in there the other day that were going to bring me some form that was miraculously going to make me give them their phone back, and they have yet to reappear with their phone, with their form. But, you know, I mean, it's just, even the parents know what the rule is. I mean, because that's the first thing they'll say, I know what the rule is, but I got to have the phone, it's, it's my work phone. Well, it's your work phone, how did your kid have it? That's my next question. Yeah.
Ms. McNeil, lastly, the accountability thing is, if I'm speeding out there, and I get pulled over, I know the rules, I get the ticket. We got to grow our kids, if you make the decision to bring the phone, and for some reason it goes off, that's life. That's, that's an accountability. We love them, we want to teach them a lesson how to grow, we don't keep it forever, we give them the phone back at the end of the suspension period, and life goes on. That policy has it worked really well for us.
Well, yeah, it's kind of like, we have the policy, but it may not be important like that. I'm not going to be going down the road, going 10 miles an hour with the speed limit, and the policeman doesn't stop me, and I'm going to complain to the police team, well, hey, he didn't stop me, I was going 10 miles an hour with the speed limit, you know. I mean, I'm, you know, nobody's going to complain about it that we don't enforce it, I don't think.
Well, at Goshen High School, we enforce it. And so, you're absolutely right, if it's not consistent, then you have the problem. But we enforce that. If we see it, if we hear it, we enforce it.
And if a teacher doesn't follow the policy, and I made aware of it, we did, teacher, administrator not following, I did with the administrator, we're going to follow that protection of that policy within a classroom.
And I will tell you, all of them follow it. I mean, I get calls from the K4 schools, you know, wanting their phone back that their first grader had too. So, it doesn't change.
This is another policy that we relaxed dramatically, because for the first 12 years that I was in administration here, or first 16 years I was in administration, we kept that phone for a year. You didn't get it back, even if it was an iPhone, whatever, you weren't getting that phone back for an entire year. That was a year-long confiscation. And we've knocked it all the way back to a five-day for first offense. So I think we've been pretty, you know, I think like we dressed, we've done the same thing, we've relaxed it to a point where it's, you know, you can get away with some of the little things that used to be a big deal, like the color of a pair of socks. That used to be a shot against you. So we've relaxed it to the point to, you know, it's not a long confiscation, it gives you a chance to get, make sure that you don't have that thing present, or if you want to see it or find it.
All right, well, I distributed what I've come up with here, with, in conjunction with this room. And so I put it into kind of five sections, and I summarized each section for you. But I wanted to give you the backup behind my summary, so you can, if you desire to read each one of those, you're welcome to. And then I left at the end with our conclusions. But I think what we have in place, just if you want to hear my final conclusions, because I know we're pressed for time, I think what we have in place works. And I think it's in our best interest for the safety of our students, and the instructional programs that we have at each of our schools to keep the policy as it is. But you guys, so what I did was, I got some in-district administrators' feedback, got some out-of-district administrator feedback, got some other district policies from around the coast. And I did, I realized this morning, I looked at Moss Point, but Moss Point says, they're not allowed to have them. First time is five days, and it goes to 10 days, then it goes to the semester, and then it goes the rest of the year. So it's, it's pretty similar to ours. And then just found some research articles, some news articles, that I thought would be of interest. I didn't include, I included a couple of the shorter ones, but there's a couple of those research articles that were like 30 pages. So if you would like access to those, I have it all, a Google Drive, I'd be happy to share that with you, just let me know. There's really interesting reading in there about some of those hairy situations that we can get in. And I think I agree with many of the other administrators in here. If we relax the policy, it just opens up the window to a lot of nefarious activities we don't want to blow on our campuses. So I think what we have is working. So that's my feedback.
Yeah, I really appreciate all this feedback. And I think it's good and helpful, and it helps me understand. I guess my only quandary is, it still is just, I'm going to want to have my kid to have a cellphone when they're old enough, and then I'm going to be telling my kid to break the rule. It's just, it just seems counterintuitive. I want, I want you to break this rule, but you just better not get caught breaking that rule, or it's your turn. It just seems like, golly, isn't there some way to, to balance both of them, where I could tell my kid, don't break the rule, this is the rule, you know the rule, and we're all, and it satisfies all the administrators and the teachers and the safety.
Well, I'll tell you, Ms. McNeil, we have, you know, of course, they can always use the office phone, if they're in an athletic event with their coach, their coach always has a way to get in touch with you, I mean, if it's, and I understand, I'm a rule follower too, some of the time. So, I understand, we want, you want to teach your children to follow the policy.
Okay, but I, and I'm going to add to that, I agree. Every place that your child goes, if there isn't someone that can get in touch with you if need be, that child doesn't have to have that phone. And I don't want anybody in here to think that I have two girls that I say, go break the rule every day. They make that, they know what the rule is, and they know what my expectation is. I, I, I've never once said, here, you've got to take, they don't have to take their phone to school at any point in time during the day. They can email me if they need to, they can go to the office and call me, there, you know, there are tons of ways. Teachers, call me, those types, if they have any way they need to, whether they're at golf, whether they're at a ballgame, any of those types of things, they can get in touch with me. They don't have to have a cellphone. So I think that's, as a parent, if you choose to say, you've got to have it with you all the time, and you tell your child that, that's one thing, but that is not a need at any, in any situation where a child is with school.
And I look at it both ways. The way Mr. McNeil is saying is, all right, if we're telling them, you can break this rule, what other rule can they break? So I looked at it that way. But as an administrator, I know if you give them an inch, they're going to take a mile. If you tell them they can wear blue, they're going to say, is this light blue good enough, or is it dark blue? So the more we give them, the more they want to take. And just your idea about them using it at breakfast. In a perfect world, at breakfast, they would be using their phones and taking pictures of, look how nice our food is. They're going to be on Facebook Live, slapping somebody, taking pictures, all kinds of stuff. And I worry about the reputation and the image of our kids, if we just willingly let them have their phones. So there's so many things that can happen. So I do understand your point, but as, as a parent, I understand your point, because I'm like, I'm telling them to break this rule, so when they break the other rule, how am I going to tell them not to break it? But as an administrator, I don't want to give them an inch, because they're going to take it. Yeah.
And I'll say one final thing, and then I know we have to move on. A lot of our other districts that have more relaxed policies, they, their students performing at 70 and 80% proficiency rates. You know, a lot of our students are performing at 40% proficiency rate. So I don't know if we want to introduce that distraction to the classroom, but we don't have any time to waste. We don't have any time to be distracted. We're in a state of emergency, there's a sense of urgency in every one of our buildings. And so introducing any kind of distraction like that is going to detract from what we're trying to do and get these kids called up for college and career.
I guess y'all want to take a quick five-minute break?
Yeah.
Freshen up a little bit. We're academic child, we're just going to work progressively from pre-kindergarten all the way through senior high schools. And I have Ms. Porco here. She is responsible for our pre-K4, our pre-K4 launch pad, our gifted, does a lot of her testing, plus she runs our family interactive service, and our except by thoughts library. So if there are any questions about any of the initial testing, Ms. Damon and Ms. Porco are here to answer that. She's also our gifted coordinator. So, y'all have any questions about that range of testing? And with that being, if you're looking in your, in your books, let me find a, and those are broken up. If you'll go to E, you can look at some of the, we were asking, Ms. Wilson, let me know if you don't have everything that you wanted to look at. This is all of our different assessments that are aligned with the state frameworks, Ms. Damon.
These are our district assessments. You may hear them called CA or DA.
Right. And my thing, I kind of wanted to see it, like on a calendar view, you know, because talking, well, just send in Piper, and she comes on, oh, I took a CA today. Well, I didn't take her, I took a CA today, you know. How could you just have a CA? Every day, I feel like she's got to test. CA, then we do, you know, our basic, we have spelling, vocabulary every Friday, then we do DAs. And so I just wanted a better understanding of, okay, these are the ones that we require as a district. I know the state requires several, and of course, we have state testing, which we're in now. What I hear from teachers, and not just my kids' teachers, is that our curriculum for our CAs, DAs, which their district is, so they're not going to be the same as state, but those don't necessarily line up, it's almost like two separate, like they don't coincide together as far as the material. So we're teaching to the CA, DA, you got to do this, got to do this. Oh, but then this is the stuff we got to teach for the state test. Is that not the case?
Completely incorrect. Completely incorrect. I don't know what teachers you're talking to.
Well, and that's teachers in conjunction with what my kid brings home, material-wise. Like, this is the study guide for this one, but this is not the stuff that's going to be on that diagnostic in the I-Red. Like, I-Ready and state tests line up, but the CA, DA stuff's not necessarily the same. Am I wrong?
Yes, you're very wrong. They, but they line up completely. They just take it in smaller chunks.
Okay.
And they take, like, a certain number of standards, and then they're tested on that. Ours run about every three weeks, it's not exactly right in every subject, every grade, because it depends on kind of when you get to a certain kind of natural break. But about, in most of my grades, you have about three in a nine weeks. You have two CAs and what we call a DA in the nine-week period. Some, sometimes there may only be two, sometimes there may be four, but on average, there's about three. At my level, we, I require nine grades in a nine-weeks period. That's a grade a week, okay? All of those grades should be equivalent. A CA shouldn't be any different than a grade I took the week before, as far as the state, the quality of the grade. Now, reality is what happens in a classroom, that may or may not be the case. There shouldn't be any more emphasis put on the CA than the grade I took the week before in the same subject, okay? What the CA allows us to do is, we are able to look at it across a district and say, we have a weakness in a particular area across the district, okay? So it may be that we see in third grade, they're having infractions, and we see that fractions, we're consistently kind of across the district having some issues with fractions. So therefore, CTL and my curriculum council members, which are just teachers in the classroom, come together and look at that data and say, okay, we, it looks like we're struggling here, we need to, when we look at pacing again, either pace differently, or provide a resource for that, so that teachers can build up that arena. We also can use it as, you know, this school seems to be getting it, or this teacher seems to be getting it across better than somebody else. So then, like, we have grade-level meetings four times a year, that teacher, we may peg, you know, Matt, and say, come in and say, tell us what you did on such and such, such, because you did this. And they get up there and they show it, and teachers are like, oh, well, you know, I never thought about, like, doing it that way. But our teachers write these assessments with, under the guidance of CTL, and have written them and tweaked them every year for, for years. We've done it that way. So we have a curriculum council member in every grade, just one person, and then until we get to fifth and sixth, and then we have basically one per subject per grade, because they're more specialized. So they come together, we already have the schedule for the summer to come in, they work with our CTL ladies, and they build this. But all throughout the year, when teachers come together for a grade-level meeting, they say, what did you like, what did you not like, okay? What went well with pacing, what didn't go well with pacing? And so teachers can tell you, okay, I kind of struggled with this, kind of struggled with that. They also have the data in front of them from these assessments to say, we did well, we didn't do well here. But these line up and are written to the same standard as the MAP test. That's some of the problem, is that our teachers read the standard from the state department, and they read it superficially. They're not getting to the depth of what the standard is saying, okay? And so then they say, the CAs are too hard, and I didn't teach it that way. Well, it's because they didn't get to the depth of the standard, of what they're really to teach.
Results from our CAs and DAs across the board, we look at those, do those correlate to how well the kids are doing with the diagnostics, the I-Ready stuff for the state test?
Uh, we haven't looked at it in that detail, I mean, gone, and made that comparison.
We haven't said good on fractions, CAs, DAs, but did we do well?
On fractions, on I-Ready, and you may or may not have even gotten to fractions on I-Ready, because remember, it's a completely different type of test. So there are two, I-Ready is pegged to where you are. So it could be above, below, or it may be a combination of those things. This is the standard for that grade, that they are expected to master to pass that grade. So those, so you have to, they're two separate things, so you have to look at them differently. If I'm doing I-Ready, I'm doing it based on what the computer says. You took a diagnostic, this is where you are, okay? Whether you're below, above, yeah, it doesn't matter. This is where you are. These are the standards that you, by this test, we were able to say, you know. So now we're going to push you on to the next thing. This is strictly third-grade work. About that diagnostic, I may be on second-grade work in I-Ready, or I may be on fourth-grade work in I-Ready, but this is third-grade work, because that is what you have to manage.
It's precious, is that everybody's on the same page.
In I-Ready.
In I-Ready.
Correct.
I'm just wondering how our results could correlate to how the results are doing with the state test. Because it is, it's not like.
It's a good correlation.
Yes. And I will tell you, by grade-wise, there's usually a very good correlation. Now, there are your outliers, and you may have a class of outliers, or you may have outliers within your class. But pretty much, if a child is an AB, you can kind of tell by where their grades are lining up, as to how they're going to do that. But also, I-Ready, different group, different thing, has a predictability feature too. So we use that more than anything else, because it's very, it's very accurate. It's about 80% accurate of how they're going to school.
Yeah. I think it's just overwhelming to me, which has been a long time since I was in elementary school, but we had a nine-weeks test. You know, we of course have a vocabulary test, we had.
But you had teacher-made tests. You had teacher tests all throughout. That's all this is. All we did is take it out of the teacher's hands for three, basically three grades in a nine-weeks period.
And it's either across the board the same.
We took those out and said, you'll give these instead, then you've got the option for the six other grades. Now, you may have 12 grades, you may have more than that, but you have to have nine. So the six others are yours that build to these. And then, you know, our teachers have access to these way before they ever give them. It's not like we keep them secret.
Right. So they know what they need.
So they know what they look like, they should know what they should, you know, the level that it's, the question's being asked, and those types of things. So they have access to it. And we give, if you go back to mine, which are these in the back, we give a suggested deck within the pacing guide.
And then it's up to the teacher.
But it's really up to the teacher, the non-negotiable is finishing the nine weeks in a nine-week period, okay? Because we take all of these standards, and if you've come over during curriculum writing, you'll see them, they have big pieces of paper and little strips of paper that have these standards, and it's like a capital. these standards and it's like a calendar. And they start, they're basically just moving the standards around on a piece of paper, knowing they have to finish everything before the math assessment. Not really, it's not the end of the year, it's the math assessment that they have to finish everything. So you start there and you back your way up. So they pace it out and they use data from the previous year saying, that data and what is the concentration on the test, because some areas are more concentration than other areas of how much time you spend on something. Now, that doesn't mean you touch it and never see it again.
You kind of reiterate it.
Yeah, you have to, I mean, it's a constant go around. But like when I started teaching, I was handed a book and said, go for it, be blessed. And I had to do that on my own. I had to take that calendar and say, how do I get through this? We just kind of take that off of them.
And I mean, I just kind of wanted to see what it looks like on the calendar, like, because sometimes I don't know, I mean, I know when things are supposed to be happening, but sometimes I don't know, oh, you have a CA tomorrow. And it's just like, hey, we do this, then we get ready for this, then we got our 45 I-Ready, we got to do this in math and reading. I just wanted to see like a school calendar, like the month of whatever, this is what this month looks like.
And we don't, we don't produce that.
I mean, I can probably do it with...
Yeah, I mean, it's here, it's just not produced in...
I just want, I'm curious.
Because I don't, I don't really have a need for that because it kind of, because I can say by February 1st, but if my class isn't ready, I'm going to be doing it on the 5th or I'm going to be doing it on the 7th. Or my class may have been ready on January 29th. So I went ahead and did it then because I knew I was going on to something that I may want to spend more time on.
But Tricia, I know what you mean to...
Yeah, it's just hard to digest because...
It is.
You come to some teachers who will sooner...
I do study guides, sometimes I don't. Sometimes we come back from a holiday and guess what, I took a reading CA. Like, why?
We do not encourage study guides. I will tell you as, on my side, we do not encourage study guides because it shouldn't be a matter of, you need a study guide to get to the CA. It should be a culmination of what you've been doing in class to get to the CA, okay? Now, that doesn't mean they should be sending a newsletter that says, this is what we're covering, but actually sending a study guide. And we've actually had to correct some teachers because the study guide was basically the test, which is a whole nother issue. It takes the validity of it completely away when basically they send the test home to you. So it's a real fine line. And so one of the things we've been looking at with grade level meetings, stop it, is, is talking about assessments and what does that really mean outside of CAs and DAs? You know, what, what does my, what do my other two grades look like building up to that? And quality and what does those types of things look like? So I understand your frustration.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and I'd like to see like how, I don't get into the picture, but like previous years, okay, this is how third grade did when it came to our CAs, DAs. This is the, the part that we struggled on or didn't do as good as we could have. And you'll have some that do better or worse, but then looking at state, okay, did we have that same, you know, lack of, you know, getting it on the state test as we did our CAs, DAs? And then maybe try like, I mean, I'm probably, you know, having really unrealistic expectations when it comes to testing and getting the results to know if you need to adjust certain things in the area.
And that's what, we do that all year long. And that's where...
And that is very time consuming, I understand that.
Christina and Marla look at it, but they're usually looking at it a week or so out because of, because it's a suggested timeframe. It's not like, there are districts that say on Thursday, everybody's given it, ready or not, here it is. We don't, we feel like the teacher knows their kids enough and how they're pacing through that to say, this is the time it's ready for. But we look at it that way and we do, we'll, I mean, they'll, they send emails out, you know, here's another resource you might want to go look at for centers to come back to this because we didn't do very well. We meet with curriculum council every, and they come together and look at it and they're teachers in the classroom, so they're looking at the data as a whole. Principals are giving the data at principals' meetings. And they're giving, they can look at it for their building, but they can't look at it as a district. So we give them the whole district data on a grade level so they can compare how their building and their teachers are doing comparative. So we can send teachers out to another classroom if we need to or, you know, bring somebody in or, or any of those types of things. It's a, it's a constant tweak. There's never a perfect, because what worked for this set of third graders and the next group coming up, they're different. There are some very consistencies. Vocabulary is consistently low, so it's something we always work on. Writing is a consistent issue that we build, okay?
Right, and even following like third grade, okay, y'all, are you still lacking when you moved to fourth? Is that still a problem?
It's a consistent, and I will tell you, that's a consistent problem across the state. We find vocabulary is the lowest area in, across this, this whole state. And it's, so it's a constant thing that we look at, how do you teach vocabulary? And one of those issues is teaching very authentically. It's very difficult. It's easy to give you a list of words and say, go learn these vocabulary words, but I didn't really learn them because I didn't use them.
Right.
So, it's, so I, you know, but you have all of them here so you can look at dates and sometimes they do start getting, because you have to remember there's language, reading, math, science, that, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate you getting all these dates together.
And then he can speak, secondary is a little different, but not significantly.
I was going to say, you know, have faith, be patient. Yeah, there's some of these where you see a grade may count three times, semantically we could call that weighted, I guess. But when it's get older, move into the secondary level and these things truly do bear weight. If you have two test grades and three quiz grades that are going to encompass 40% of your average, and of course, I have never gone in to an open house and met a teacher or had a core subject kickoff and a contract and I had a calendar attached to it that says, we will test this test on this day, this test on this day, know that these assignments make this much of your average, this exam for this class is going to be this much of your average. So when you get into a position that it truly, you can make or break a course on three or four assignments, you all are given a lot of advance notice about that kind of stuff. In my experience, that is.
Ms. Wilson, any other questions?
No, I've got everything I need. I'm just going to, I'm virtual. I've got to see, yeah.
I was just going to say, the testing schedule, you can see how the testing schedule works. I mean, because we're online for so many of the assessments now, those are like four week windows, six week windows, and everything in that testing calendar, those are mandated tests. And so while we're block scheduled, so in the fall, all we're really, we have the MCAS at the beginning of pre-testing and we, we have some other assessments that we do. And then the secondary for biology one, you know, US history, algebra one and English two. But when you get, really in February, I mean, we're wrapping up. In your notebook, it shows specifically what we do for those ACT, starting at the middle school level, working our way through, trying to get these kids prepared, because the only state mandate for the ACT are the juniors.
Right.
And so that is one test that we're still holding out. Online testing for the ACT is an option. I can tell you, there are only a handful of schools in the state, in the state that are doing the online ACT and ACT asks, why aren't more schools doing online ACT? And that's because the national tests are still paper pencil. And so we want them to have the same...
Experience.
The same experience. And so what we also realize is, we have a group of students that will take the ACT on their own several times. We also know that there is a group of students, the only time they're going to take the ACT is that, during that junior year. So we've got a scaffold of skills and those types of things and to get them ready for the ACT. So, and we also know, and you've heard us say this, the whole scholarship dollars are tied to the ACT. So, you know, we're constantly looking at ways to get the kids' ACT scores up. And so we don't just look at the 11th grade score. If we've got some kids that have taken it earlier, we start to plot and see where they are, we look at their sub-tests, you know, we encourage them, sign up, you know, sign up for the next, the next test. One of the new things, we're always trying new things, but one of the new things that we've done this year for the first time is pre-ACT for grade 10. So what, what, of course, we always joke about Pearson and we talk about ACT being the mafia because they own all of the assessments and those types of things, but they're, when you look at, if you're going above and beyond, what is the purpose of the CA and DA? What is the purpose of pre-ACT? It's all to increase the scores, that's right, so that they do better when it comes to the testing. I mean, we're all nervous about the third grade reading gate that...
Well, and it does help when it changes every year.
And so, you know, but, but so what we did this year was, ACT has a pre-ACT and it is about 45 minutes less than just the ACT. But when they, when they, there is a direct correlation between the scores that they, if, if the student does the best that they can do, there is a direct correlation between how well they do on that pre-ACT at that given time and the suggested score on the ACT. That opens up, that, that little piece of data is huge for us. Because it can look at, wow, this kid scored 14 here, what do we have to do? And then you talk with the teachers and you have your boot camps, they're going like, this kid just didn't try because the function, the, the ability level of this kid doesn't warrant that. Because we, we have to, we have so many assessments that are mandatory, we have to make sure that these kids, they have purpose for taking all of those tests.
And that was kind of my thing with CAs. Well, what, does it tell us, it may not correlate exactly because they're all on different levels, but is it giving a, can we get data that shows us that the CAs and DAs improve our performance on the state test and the, the other tests that they have to take that are state mandated?
What the CA and DA does tells you whether the child met the grade level standard.
Right.
And the expectation of that grade level standard. And you're going to have some that do and some that don't.
Right.
So it's going to say, and that's the purpose of the CA. Because what a teacher should do is they give the CA, they look at the data and then at some point in time through that remediation and enrichment, they're coming back to that with those children that need that, because like they say didn't...
If, so like say a kid takes the CA, they fail it, they're given another opportunity.
They are.
And they have like a window of like, you've got to do it within so many days or is that a teacher discretion too?
Yeah, but you don't want to let it get too, I mean, you want to do it within a week or two, because you don't want to let it get too far out there, because then you're going to be, you're, then you're doing the next one. So it's, you know, you try to keep within a week or so.
When they retake, does that replace their grade completely or do you average the two?
It goes in.
It goes in?
Unless it's worse, and I can tell them, if it's worse, please just leave.
Okay. And same thing with the DA, a district assessment.
They do not retake a district assessment because the end of the nine weeks, it's...
That's it?
Right.
Okay.
There's no opportunity to...
Right.
And there is a direct correlation between the skill level that they have on those CAs and DAs and how well they should perform on that skill on the statewide assessment. And you know, and the other thing is when you talk about the accountability grades for schools and you talk about selling the community and selling your school district and those types of things, everything matters, everything that the kids do matter. And just going back to the ACT, so the state, that they pull the scores, we're compared to all the other school districts in the state on that one assessment. Now, when it comes to the accountability, we're looking at a senior snapshot. And so when these seniors get here, we're, we are encouraging students to take the ACT again on national test dates. But of course, we can't get them up, we can't get them ready, we can't make them go. We do understand the importance from an accountability standpoint of the junior ACT, but we're always looking at ways, and not just for the lower scoring students, we're looking at ways, when you have kids that are, that are a little bit higher, getting them into that scholarship dollar range and encouraging them, which is another reason why we started the pre-ACT. Because although it's, I know I sound like a broken record, it's not a replace, it's not the same as an ACT, but it gives you the format. And so we're all about, even from the young age moving up, we're all about formatting things that mirror the statewide assessment. So when the kids get to those statewide assessments, it's not like it's foreign to them.
Right.
And, and the vendors that we use through the state for our assessments, they have practice tests and I'm telling you, the day, the day-to-day operations and making sure that these kids get what they need, pacing, because that is huge, and making sure that we're completing the correct standards and we've got the teachers, it, to me, it's a whole package deal. That's why we have the Center for Teaching and Learning, that's why, why we have the Teacher Enhancement Academy. We do more for teachers coming into the school district than a lot of other school districts do, because we know they're the first line of defense. We can sit here and talk about it all day, but ultimately the teacher goes into the classroom, shuts the door. Classroom management, skill level of the teacher, pacing of the students, all of that is just a culmination of getting to the accountability grades and getting to how well they perform on the assessment. And we're just as excited about the growth of our pre-K K babies on the MCAS, what they, the skill level starting kindergarten, it's amazing. And so everything builds and because Mississippi has that gate in the third grade, the things that we do to try to get into kids, because everyone knows if you, if you can't read by the third grade, we do a lot of reading skills and things through the third grade and then we start kicking into a lot of comprehension. And so we're, we're working on those at-risk students. And the CAs and DAs, it's a beautiful merging of that along with, along with statewide assessment. But right now, we are smack dab in the middle of testing. And in your binder, not only did we put the testing calendar, we also have a, like a score sheet type thing of, I think it's in F, that shows you how many schools are testing on each day.
So it looks like a little calendar.
And, and we're also very blessed with the bandwidth that we have in the school district that we can get much more creative in how we do our, our online testing because we have the bandwidth to support it. The reason why the assessment windows are so large is because some school districts are literally having to test every single day to get through because they can't support that many students testing simultaneous. And so we, really, the, the resources and the technology that we have in the school district, and Eva could say more about that from a technology standpoint, it's really phenomenal, what we can do. I mean, we've shut, even when we have our high testing days, we go ahead and announce to all of the teachers and administrators, hey, we're shutting down YouTube the next three days, we're shutting down Pandora, we're shutting down anything that might eat up some of our bandwidth, because we've got to give those kids the best testing environment that, that we can. And I know that was a whole lot.
It was.
And now, and now I'm thinking, and now I didn't answer anybody's question.
We'll get back to you on that. Very quickly, guys, on the bandwidth issue, just wanted to tell you, we started with 45 megabits of bandwidth in 2005, we now have 5,000 megabits of bandwidth. Doug, if you've been on the board for, we echo this over and over. This is the wagon that we jumped on very quickly and Doug Velt was a big proponent of it when we started. Even the fiber optics that have been run through these communities from Southern Light Mobile, we were part of that group that created that opportunity for them to run the hard lines that are here. But the, we've had about 11,000 percent, we can go up to 10,000 megabits if we, what do we have to be able to get?
17.
So we went from 45% to 5,000, that's accessible right now. The other part of that is if you read the paper or saw the online articles, Roger Wicker just talked about how the federal government needs to come in and help with bandwidth. We've been pushing this for a long time legislatively because we want to make sure that we've got adequate bandwidth and some of what's slowing the state down right now is most districts don't have adequate bandwidth and they have adequate machines and those kind of things. And before we get to ACT totally, let me just direct y'all's attention to two points, technology inventory, switch inventory and Chromebook inventory, which is P.
But before we get there, I got a couple of questions about DA and CA. All right. Teachers test way more than they did 30 years ago. Is that fair?
They're a more mandated test, but a classroom test, no, I wouldn't say more.
Right, okay, more mandated test and they have to teach and they have less discretion about what they, what is on the test than they did 30 years ago. Because it's mandated, because it's a mandated test whether it's district...
The CAs and DAs.
The state framework. The state framework is what guides everything we do in the classroom. The loss of autonomy is a result of the state framework.
And I, and I agree with that. And so, and so what I'm trying, so of course, feedback I get from teachers is, teacher, being a teacher is a calling, I believe, and it, and it takes a special person to do that. And there's a, a higher burnout to some extent because of all the mandated testing. And so I think there's some teachers that believe that as a district, we test more than other districts. Is that, is that accurate? And if it's not accurate, what are we doing to communicate to our teachers that what they are doing is not useless, what they are doing is, is not mandated by the state and, and to, to increase that... And, and to, to increase that morale from them, that we're not just, um, you know, making them spin a hamster wheel unnecessarily?
Well, at my level, teachers have input all the way through. Now, whether they choose to speak up or not, you know, I don't, I will tell you, I hear it all the time, but all of us went to elementary school and you took a test a week in a subject, pretty much every subject. You did that. It may not, you, they may not have called it that, but you took something that they put a grade on and handed back to you in every subject, pretty much every week. Okay? It's the same thing. The difference is we have regulated some of those across a district to make sure that teachers are meeting the new standards. There's a lot of confusion with the standards. And it's just a matter of what is the standard really say? When it's, like I said, a teacher will read it superficially and not get to how it is going to be assessed on the MAP assessment. Accountability is huge and that is where the stressors come in because we all feel it. I mean, my principals will be on pins and needles whenever the state decides to give out the third grade reading games.
When they're touting us.
And right now is the Friday before the kids are eligible to take the retest on Monday. Okay? They have no control over that, there's not a thing they can do about that. That is the most ridiculous timeline I have ever seen when the law says, I have to provide remediation to a kid before they can take a retest, but you're not even going to give me the scores until five-thirty on Friday before they take the retest on Monday. So that, that's where your stressors come in, is the accountability. Not that we don't want to be accountable, it's just it's so fierce. And we take, you know, I think, I will, I take As and Bs and Cs with a grain of salt because I see what happens in those classrooms every day with teachers. I will tell you, teachers tell us, and by us, I mean C T L, me, us at grade levels, they would wish we would just write their lesson plans and tell them, do this on day one, do this on day two, do this on day three. So I have as teachers say that as much as I have teachers say, why can't you just let me teach? Well, I can't let you teach because that eight-year-old is taking a test in April that decides whether they go to fourth grade or not. So if I just let you do what you wanted to do in class and not follow the standards, many of my eight-year-olds would not make it to fourth grade because you didn't give them what they needed to be successful. So that's where we take the standards and lay them out for them and give them these guidance with, through C As and D As so that they know whether they're teaching and meeting those standards along the way. Now, there's a lot of confusion with like iReady. You know, we call it iReady. The state dictates that we have to give a universal screener in K through eighth grade. Actually says K through twelve. K through eighth grade in reading and math. We choose iReady as our universal screener. So it's a mandate that we do it, we choose, we have a list of products we could use, iReady is the one we choose to use. So the diagnostic that's given three times a year is a mandate from the state. Now, it's one of the, I will tell you, twenty-six years, I wish when I was handed a textbook, that I was also handed iReady at the same time because I could have been a bang-up teacher if I'd had those resources in my hand. Because it's amazing what's there. Can't be overwhelming because there's so much there. But it is absolutely amazing what is there to grow a child or enrich a child. So I, I mean, a kindergarten teacher has access to everything in iReady, now pre-K, they've added, all the way through eighth grade as a kindergarten teacher. So if I've got a kid that's excelling, excelling, I can give them some of those things that I may not have had access to before. The same thing with a fourth grade teacher. I've got it all the way down to my before kindergarten skills through eighth grade. So if I've got a kid that's struggling, I can reach back down and grab some of those things to give them that enrichment in there. Along with, it's simple little things I can send home to parents that they can help. This is how you help. Sometimes a parent, you say, your child's struggling in reading, okay, what do you want me to do? Well, I can, iReady has little things that you can, that literally goes through and you can, anybody could follow and help your child get some of those skills picked up. All of those things are there. So I would, I agree, there's a lot of testing. I mean, I use the term, there's no child untested, no grade untested. We test everybody at some point in time for some reason. And when you look through, if you keep going in F back there, this is the mandated state test, this blue, you know? But that doesn't even cover because I think you don't have.
In the back, in the back on the second page.
Okay, there's another little sheet.
Page two.
That's, that's what I've been dictating on. So, you know, I mean, that's why things are more prescribed for teachers all the way up because there are now, none of us lived under, you had to pass these state assessments to get through. And now that's where we are.
And one of the things I did not put in there because it's not a state mandate, that advanced placement. And, and we have so many students that are taking that. But what, what is the importance of taking those tests? Well, you can, you, you score a three or a four and you're looking at getting free money in college because you don't have to take those classes, collect those classes. And so we do a lot of assessment. I mean, a lot of it is state mandated and then, and then we, we have a higher E L population. And so we do, the month of March is the English Language Proficiency Test. And so we have all hands on deck for that assessment as well because we've got a larger population to get through that assessment.
But going back to what teachers, every teacher has the opportunity to express their concerns about anything that's put out there, whether pacing is too fast or too slow, whether they think a question is just bad. Um, you know, because they have access to all of it. And I, I mean, C T L gets, go look at question number six, doesn't make sense to me. And sometimes it's a matter of, you got to go meet with that teacher and explain question number six because it is right. And sometimes it's a matter of, oh yeah, there's a whole, there, yeah, there's something wrong with it. We fix it immediately and send it out before the kids have taken it. So they have input into it the entire time. We tell them they can communicate with their curriculum council member, so that's a peer that they, you know, C T L, me, I mean, any, you know, anytime. They have a concern or a question or want, you know, we have volunteers that come in this summer just because they want to be a part of it. And they'll come work with the people who are writing curriculum, they want to grow themselves, they want to learn. And they come up there and they just want to be a part of it and see how the process works. It's very eye-opening for some of them when they do that.
And on the ACT part, let me, I, I have worked with, directly with Karen Ryan, the former advisory team, my first year, and I told her then that the ACT should be the only test we take in high school outside of your AP exams, that the ACT is a comprehensive analysis of how you perform as, across your entire four core areas or three core areas. But even with history, you're still going to read comprehension, retention and those types of things. So, and, and that's a very economical test. It takes you three hours to take it, it's a half-day and you can test all your kids and see where you are. Well, we went to the state mandate of every junior will take that state test. So within our district, and we've been back and forth because we used to do that at the eighth grade, they changed these tests up for ACT, but we used to start in the eighth grade and we still do have some things we do at the eighth grade level and middle school level with kids on ACT. But now we do tenth grade, yeah, explorer plan, all that stuff. So we've had, you know, we've got it all documented here at the, under ACT prep, but all the things we currently do, including pullouts, uh, all-day sessions, um, just boot camps, I mean, just a lot of different things we, we try to do for our kids. But, so I don't, I think we've got a real disaster on our hands with state civic carry testing right now because they put in a concordance table that says, okay, well, if your grade's high enough, then, then you'll make the score, we'll look at both of them. Well, that automatically leaves grade inflection, which just, it doesn't keep a consistent, uh, application of grading because then you got principals and, and I'm not saying that, that we do this, but I know this is happening, that you have principals saying, well, you know, if he just made this score, then we'd get off on the concordance and that kid wouldn't have to take that test again. Well, at that point, you don't have a valid and reliable measure for that class anyway, so why not do it comprehensively? So we put a lot of emphasis on our state testing. And if you look in your packet, um, there's what I've got here, it's called ACTA A-plus in your, this is your supplemental packet. And I would like to ask the board, and we have this in existing funding now to do, um, that we do an ACT ACTA for next year for our junior kids. The only time that they will ever get this opportunity is in the spring ACT administration. And so Polly.
So if you take the pre-ACT scores that they have now, mine the data with the students on how they scored on the pre-ACT, those are the same students that will be taking the junior ACT next year.
And so we've put together a plan to incentivize our students because we are going to college and career academies to where students could earn dollars for performance on ACT. And this is an effort to, you know, make it to where kids understand there's, there's something they get out of this ACT, there's a value to it. So we put a scale together for what children would earn as a result of it. We believe that it would be less than fifteen thousand dollars. That money is available in an account we have called Student Activities, which goes up to a hundred thousand dollars right now. Uh, and then the second part is something that can be taken out of an existing budget. But if a campus raises their score by one full point, then all instructional personnel would receive a two-hundred-dollar supplement, which is an A-plus supplement, just like we have A-plus supplements for technology, reading, and language, uh, and math. Uh, and then if they made a two-full-point increase collectively, then they would receive a four-hundred-dollar increase. And we've included the C C T I in this because they also have a role in doing ACT prep work over there.
You better believe it.
So, and my point is that this is an opportunity to do a pilot year just to see if it has any impact and see where it pushes our ACT scores to.
I mean, the main thing that we look for is you've got those overachiever kids, you've got the ones that they know what, what they're doing, they've already pre-planned how they want to move on. But there are some kids that, that even though we explain to them the purpose of the ACT and how important it is to do your very best job, because you never know what you might want to do with those scores, we still have some apathy. You know, they're just, they're just not really trying. But with the pre-ACT scores, we can kind of see a correlation between how well they did, did they try, what, what, what skills can we work on? Um, we, we do test-taking strategies for the ACT. Well, we spend, the, the C T L spends a lot of time doing a lot of things, trying to increase those ACT scores. And not just for the students that are at below college and career-ready standards, but those that are on the cusp of getting more money. Because we all know where that cutoff is for partial scholarships and whole scholarships and, and that type of thing.
Now, I want to talk about ACT a little bit more. I want, and I want to talk to Ms. Davis a little bit offline about a few things, but I want to, so these are some of the questions that I've got from teachers. And really, I just want like yes or no, because I, you know, some things are inaccurate and we just may need to be, communicate things better to teachers. All right, so testing, are we more, less, or the same as other districts that we want to be, that are, let's just say A districts? Are we more, less, or the same?
It varies by district. I mean, we do very similar things, it depends on the district. I mean, there, I mean, like I can tell you, Biloxi Gulfport, both of them have used something very similar to C As and D As. They call them something different, but they use the same, it's the same type thing. Everybody's mandated to do the mandated test.
Right. But not, I guess, I guess theoretically, some, some school districts may not be doing D As or C As, but they're like.
Absolutely.
They're likely doing something.
Well, the teacher has to take a grade, so whether it's created by the district or created by the teacher.
By the teacher, okay.
It's still happening.
Okay, so there's some school districts that don't require a C A, a D A, or equivalent.
Right.
Okay.
But the teacher's still taking the grade. It's just the teacher created it rather than the district.
And so, okay, so if a teacher comes to me and says, we test more than other districts, I'm getting burnt out on it. There's some truth to it, but there's also, I, I'm getting some feedback and I'm understanding more of it. Okay, I think how, how we handle things.
Let me make a, a comment there. Would you find, well, I know, you know, I realize there's, there's a little teacher burnout, but would you find that it's more in the teachers that were teaching before all this came about and it's just hard for them to change? I know when I was.
Some, yes. It was very difficult when the standards changed for some of them to understand the new standards. That's, the younger teachers tend to take to the standards better. Not always, but in general, simply because that's all they've ever known.
Right.
The, the others, you know, I've always taught third grade and the standards changed. And you know, if you remember, the standards changed like four years in a row. It changed, it changed, it changed, it changed. And, and so, I mean, I would tell you, it was confusing for everybody, it was, everybody played in the mud and we all tried to just get through it. But they remember how they taught whatever it was before and the new standards took that and raised it to a new level. So, and it's hard for them to understand that when they're reading the standard and it's talking about nouns and verbs and grammar, that it's not circling nouns in a sentence anymore. I, I, you know, I don't ever need you to circle nouns in a sentence, you're never going to be asked to circle a noun in a sentence. I need you to understand what does a noun play in a sentence? What its roles? How do you write a sentence with a noun? And so it's very, that's been difficult.
You're not, you're not functioning in Bloom's taxonomy, you're not at the knowledge, comprehension, application level anymore. You're at the analysis, synthesis, evaluation level. So you're functioning at the top level in the questions and the way they're formatted and written compared to what it used to be, which was knowledge, comprehension, and application. So it's a much different dynamic as it relates to how a child has to, in, in, in most cases, when we talk about synthesis, they're formulating an answer based on what they've read, which takes a totally different approach than memorizing spelling words. And that's, and it's part of the career and college thing that we're doing now is, and I think Matthew could tell you, working at Chevron, there's a language at Chevron that you speak. There's a language in accounting that you speak. There's Latin in the law field that comes into play, you know? So there's a language that goes along with all these career paths. And basically, what we're trying to do by individualizing our career and college pathways is to introduce our students to that language and expand their vocabulary so they better understand, because they may get a passage and they're running across words, they have no idea what the word is. You know, so you got to expand that vocabulary in order for them to be able to comprehend what they're doing on that test. So it is, it's more difficult, it's not, it's not less difficult.
It is, it's very difficult. You know, you, you hear a lot about math, the new math, it's the same old math, math, you know, two plus two is still four, it's going to be four, a hundred years ago, we'll be four years now. But how we teach that, like when I, when you get into like your decomposing and composing numbers, parents are looking at you like, what? What'd you just say to me? Okay, well, you learned traditional, two plus two is four, two plus three is five, you know, you went home and you memorized and you did flashcards. We still do that. But we also want you to understand that numbers make sense. And there's a rhyme and a reason to numbers. And so like a person, like he will do this, he was doing it in the car the other day. He can multiply faster probably than anybody I know. All he's doing is an array. And parents will go, you want my kid to do what? How do you want, why can't we just multiply the same old way we did and drop the zero and all? You can. But when a kid totally understands an array, he doesn't need to write that out to do that, he can do it in his head. And you've all figured those tricks out if you use math on a daily basis. Now we just teach it to them earlier so they understand that. So when they get into those advanced maths, they're not playing with numbers anymore in their head, they're not confused by what numbers make sense, they understand why they, these rules come into play and they're not having to struggle with that. So it's a productive struggle, but it's very different because it's not, it's not the way, you know, we went home with twenty-five problems and you sat there and you worked them all out and the teacher checked every step of the problem. We're not doing that anymore. That doesn't mean you can't teach your child that way and we will teach your child that way too, but there's more to it. So when those advanced maths come up, they understand that numbers make sense.
Okay, two more questions. And this is more on the elementary level. All right, A R reading goals. I've gotten feedback from teachers and parents that our A R reading goals are less than some other districts, they are not as high. Is that accurate?
We use the standard that is set by Accelerated Reader. The cap we place on it is the grade level. Because what will happen is if you have an advanced child that is scoring up there, they take a star test, which we don't even take the star test past anymore. But if we use Lexile levels and we do that and this child is scoring really high, then that child ends up with having to have fifty points based on scale when the average third grader only needs twenty for the ninth grade. I'm not going to make that child, just because they're advanced, have to read through fifty points in a nine-week. If they want to, they're absolutely capable of, but to meet their goal, they only need the grade level. Other than that, what's the exact standard?
What are we doing to encourage those kids that are advanced? And we want them, we want them to get to 50, we're just not going to require it.
The teacher has, can do whatever they choose to at that point. I mean, their book level starts at grade level. We never take away grade level quality books from them. Because if I did just by Lexile, I would have some fifth graders who their book level is way up there and the books are not appropriate.
Right, I understand.
So I always take great, their book level starts, if they're advanced kid, their book level starts with grade level appropriate stuff, which means sometimes it may, like especially when you get in fourth and fifth grade, that may really be a three-point something that their book level starts with, because those are the books that are appropriate for them and they should be reading. And then goes up. Because if I get into even a 5.0 book on a book level that's scored out by book level, a lot of times that content is completely inappropriate for a child. You have to remember, most things that you read for pleasure are written at a third, fourth grade level. So you get into some of that, you're rarely going to find a book that's a true, what you consider eighth-grade level material, and it's not inappropriate. Even your five, fifth grade, when you grade out the words in the book, the content of the book is not appropriate.
If we have a third or fourth grader and they're reading on a fifth or sixth grade level, we're encouraging them to read on a fifth or sixth grade level?
No, because most of the time those books are not appropriate.
I don't, I don't think...
I think we're speaking to it from two different ways.
Two very different things.
So, yes, are we encouraging them to continue to excel, to digest that much, to grow to that point level? Absolutely. Now, being in that spot, I mean, my third grade daughter bringing home Catcher in the Rye because she needs 50 points to make this AR goal, right? Because of just what she said, some of the things discussed in that book are completely inappropriate there. But are we going to say, "Well, no, you're in third grade, you've hit 20. Chill out and go play solitaire on the computer"?
No, they still have AR time.
They're still going to get those things. They're still going to push them to read more, to grow more. But, and the libraries do a good job of this at the school level. There's walls and walls and walls of books that you can go in there and choose from.
Yeah, you do different things. You can change genres. You change into the chapter books or another author. You try to get them hooked on another author. You know, I mean, there's all kinds of ways that you go about doing it. But no, I will tell you, I will never encourage a third grader to go pick up a 5.0 level book. Because the content on the vast majority of it is completely inappropriate and that would be the next phone call I got.
Let me speak to that too, because I have kids that have come through that level. And I have a daughter that reads really well. She's in the first grade and she's, she's got older brothers and she wants to read all their books. And there's so much rich literature for her grade level...
For her age, that's right.
That she would miss.
If she jumps up there.
She's capable of reading at a third grade or higher level, but there's good quality literature. And she's reading a high grade level.
And they should be exposed to it.
And she...
Yeah, well, this is the feedback I'm getting from teachers. That kids are entering second, third, fourth grade. They are reading at advanced level. We encourage them to read on grade level. They are exiting that year regressing. Because if you read, if you read over the summer, fifth grade books, if you read over the summer, fifth grade books, and then we say, "No, you're in third..."
I'm not telling you no, you're not telling them no. I'm just not saying, as a third grader, "I only want you to go get 5.5." I'm not going to encourage, one, in my K-4 schools, you're not going to find a lot of them because the content of the book is inappropriate for that age child.
But a fifth, I mean, the difference between a third grader and a fifth grader content-wise is not...
The grade level of the book has nothing to do with what the book is about. It has to do with the readability of the book. Those are two very different things.
Right, I agree with that. So I, I mean, it sounds like we might need more fifth and sixth grade content-appropriate books.
There's not a lot out there. That's what I'm telling, when you get a book that is graded for five and six, the content is completely inappropriate. We have, we have tons of books, but you don't have a large collection of that because the, most of the things you pick up for pleasure, if we're graded on an AR scale, are going to hit between three and four grade-level material.
Yeah, well, let me ask, for example, Nancy Drew, Harry Potter. Do you think that's appropriate for second, third, fourth grade?
Some kids, yes, some kids, no. And that's in every one of our libraries.
Those books?
Harry Potter, we have Harry Potter in all of our libraries. And kids that read them. And I, but I will also tell you, I've had parents call me and tell me, "How dare you have those books in your library? They're completely inappropriate for kids." And that's where a parent is going to have to come in and say, "You have to make some of those decisions."
Well, see, I see where you're going, because a lot of times if you've got a child that's training at advanced, so there's probably a maturity level that's a little bit higher also. I'm speaking for my, as a parent. You know, my child was always ahead of his grade level and was always, you know, I had to go buy his own books because, it's like you're saying, he couldn't get what he needed in the library. But again, I think that's when, as a parent, I decided or I made the decision what I... And, you know, I might let my child read something that boy might not let his child, and then the book might be 13. So I understand what you're saying because I lived that as a parent. But I just, on my own, I had to buy him books.
And I think across the district, the teachers are picking up on that too. I know there's some programs out there at work over the last couple of years. We threw down our shoes. We probably put, that I know of, three or four classroom libraries in for teachers because they'll come and say, "Hey, we're encountering this." Now, a lot of times it's going to be an advanced-level English teacher who has a lot of advanced-level students. And you realize that gap in some of those situations where you've got, you know, 20 of these students in a classroom. And they'll say, "We want to go out and procure these books so they can meet those goals. Check them out in here, bring them back in here." And the content is a little different. So they do see that and they buy them ways to reach out in the community. Helps remedy some of that situation too, you know? We just put one in negotiation and then...
But kids aren't restricted. I'm the advanced kid. They're not restricted how high they can read.
Yeah, and I hear you.
I mean, that's up to the, that's up to the end of their teacher.
Kind of like our athletic eligibility policy. I was getting feedback from parents and some, some coaches that they were under the impression that there was, you know, there wasn't even a grace period. There wasn't even a warning period. There wasn't even a, you know, a discretion for the principal. And that's because they didn't read the policy. That's just, it's been, it goes down through so many layers from the administration.
Right, and it's all in how a teacher enforces it in the classroom.
The feedback I'm getting from teachers is that, and not all teachers, but some teachers are under the impression that they should only encourage their kids to read on grade level. And I think we might just need to communicate to, "Hey, if you've got an advanced kid, encourage them to read a fifth-grade book."
I mean, I'll show you the policy. It doesn't say that.
I know.
It says, "Don't take away grade-level appropriate material from them." Because as a third grader, I should be reading third-grade appropriate material. I mean, I should be enriched in that and engrossed in that. There's tons of it out there that's appropriate for their developmental level, their maturity level, you know? And they're going to grow just by reading.
Yeah, yes, but I mean, if you, if you're on fifth-grade level, you're not going to grow much reading third-grade level. You're just not. I mean, it is, I mean, I've seen it with my own kids. Captain Underpants is a lot different than what, you know, a chapter book.
But that's where the teacher changes out there and says, "Let's change your genre." Okay, you've been reading Captain Underpants and you've done well with it. So let's change your genre and we're going to go out here and we're going to pick something different. So, I mean, there's tons of ways to enrich kids and it's a matter of the teacher monitoring what that kid's reading and pushing them to go in another direction.
All right, final question before we get to ACT homework. Are we providing less homework than other districts that are A districts? Are we providing about the same, are we providing more? Where are we?
We don't dictate homework, so, I mean, that's up really to the teacher.
Before I came here, I was at the A district, that's where my child was. And there's less homework here than we have there. That's just a personal.
I think it has changed a little bit in mine. I think we're going to see it change a little bit more moving forward with the, with the block changes at the secondary level. Let's say, in recent history, we would get a lot of that, "What homework do we have this weekend? Don't we have any we finished it in class?" Feel like there was some, there was some dead time there that could have been eaten up and restructured. District realized that. Changes were made and it's a kick in the teeth for some children because, yeah, now you may be bringing home three classrooms worth of homework out of a five-block day where you weren't historically. Is it unmanageable? I don't feel like. But I think that before we can make adequate judgment there, we're going to need another year or so of full implementation to let this process play out. I do think it's a good thing moving back to a five, because there was some dead time in the school day. And I think that's why we didn't see much homework coming home. You would get the, "I finished it in class, every class, every day." And that's not where we want to be. We want to challenge a little bit more than that. So my personal opinion of moving in that direction.
Let me revert back to one thing on that ACT A-plus proposal. We never did get a consensus on that from the board, that, you know, where they incentivize the students, the money, and the teachers. Are we good with that and how Mr. Dolph, if you...
If we're going to roll with it, I'd like to see it for two years instead of one. We've got teachers found to gave, reacting, respond, this can be...
Well, the thing, the only thing with that is because when we start crunching the numbers with it, if you had a full-point jump, it's going to be real hard in the next year to get a whole full-point jump again. So we're looking at potentially adjusting the teacher side of it. So there may be a .5 jump. So we wanted to just pilot one year, see how the funding is. We've got it funded now. But just where we would have the flexibility to come back in and adjust the teacher side of it on where they would be. Because kids are, kids remain the same. But when Polly and I started talking about it, it was like, well, you know, you're really going to shut the teachers out if they do a full point in one year and then the next year is... Because now you're talking two-tenths, three-tenths either direction just with the numbers. And what we're trying to do is try to fuse, get a fusion of all people motivated towards this goal and build that campaign from, you know, the end of May until next spring.
Hey, for performance contracts are common across pretty much every industry you want to look at. I don't see why this profession should be any different. And I guess in my comment, modifications are great. I don't want to see us completely take it away in a second year and say, "Well, X number of people didn't meet it, so apparently it's not going to work. Let's chunk it." Let me, let's make sure they have time to get it rolling.
And part of, and part of our practice is going to be evaluating what's really working, what's not working. We get some feedback on what we currently do as it relates to ACT. And I do want to address Taylor as it relates to A and B districts. Guys, I can't emphasize this enough. This is a difficult district to work in. There is no question about it. You want to compare us and Ocean Springs. Ocean Springs has the second-least number of socio-economically disadvantaged kids in Mississippi, I think is the last number. They have the second-highest number of college-educated parents in the state. They have access to upper-class neighborhoods all over the place. They have new development, new homes being built. We haven't had new homes built collectively here in 20 years probably in the leveling that they're doing there. We get children who come to us who didn't go through a process of my kids. My kid tested on Harry Potter in first grade and made a 90. You know, I mean, that's, that's the thing. And my kids, I'm very liberal in expanding their boundaries. I mean, my children and I are painting and building biomes at my house. And they know every species of every animal across four biomes right now, all the way down to my two-year-old. And so my point is, it's real difficult to make that comparison because some kids come more ready to learn than our kids do. And when we're talking about 20% of our students are Hispanic students, but 11% are English-language students and they've got a year to get there once they're here. And then they're tested. And that's the second-highest number in state. We've already been told from the accountability standpoint, we're going to be hit because we have a high EL population and we're the losers on that new accountability model. Secondly, third-grade reading that came out, it's going to the third-grade test, the MC Math test, that that's going to be, in Ocean Springs, you're going to see a dramatic improvement at 98.6, 98.8.
Just performance level one.
In the last few years. So us in Ocean Springs has been very comparable. Well, when you move up to that level, you've got a lot more ready-to-read kids at Ocean Springs than you do here. So they're going to come out initially at a higher point, but then we'll take the second test and we'll catch up to them. Unfortunately, we have a punitive humiliation system for accountability in Mississippi and they think you can humiliate people into better performance. That's exactly why I went and testified before the review board at the State Department. And they unanimously agreed that children with 15 to 25 IQ shouldn't be graded. And because we have the good heart to take on the exceptional school, you get to have an F-rate at school. Well, that proved unanimously, said, "That's wrong. We're not doing it, let the F's from the federal government just sue us." Because we're going to back you up on this. Then we go to the state board and the state board says, "We're going to fix it legislatively." They don't fix it legislatively. And we, tell you, and I had this conversation. But they don't fix it legislatively. They say, "Okay, well, we're going to do this, we're going to take these kids who are 15 to 25 and wherever they would live normally, we're going to just track that back to their school." So now you're saying, kids, this is appropriate for a kid to take a Math A, get an F, it goes back to your school. You're telling that parent, your kid's a failure, the teacher's a failure. And most of these kids, we're trying to train for survival beyond the 21 years that we're responsible for. So I just, I, there's, it is a super frustrating thing to try and keep all this together. And, and, I mean, within your, within your stuff here, because I can assure you, nobody is going to this level that we go to. Now, I know that some people have moved to our level a little bit. But if you look at that, find the tutoring project that's within the tab. Tell me where that one is.
We already have preliminary scores for this year's junior ACT. It's due in February. So graduation rate in ACT are all over our readers. So we already know what that is. So I don't have all of the accommodated kids on my graph, but just to kind of give you an idea, we have, this is both high schools combined, seven juniors with a 30 and above, 18 between 27 and 28, 22 students between 24 and 26, 55 students between 21 and 23, 96 students between 18 and 20. And then I was, I was doing the math because we have two students starting at 11, eight students at 12, 28 at 13. So, so I'm looking at, what's 76 and 87? Somebody?
163.
So we have 163 juniors combined between both high schools that scored a 17 or less. And so we're always looking at ways to increase that ACT score. Now, why might we have some students at the bottom? We test all students. So there may be some students that are doing the best job that they can do and that's where they're going to land. Or you have some students that have the ability, but they're non-English-speaking. And so they just came in, don't speak any English. They may be sitting there. Of course, we also have some EL students that are sitting at the top. So it's, it's a healthy balance with trying to move all the students up, including those that are sitting at, I know my daughter took the ACT seven times, could not get past a 29. Why? Because she couldn't get past a 26 in math. What did I do? I offered tutoring. I took her somewhere. We did whatever we could do. We do understand not every parent has the resource to take them to $500 boot camps and all these other types of things. So what can we do to level the playing field for all students? To bump them up on the ACT average, to get them to where they need to be? And so that, it's more than just encouragement. It's showing the students. Let me show you what a 23, what is the full scholarship at a Juco?
23.
23. Buddy, you scored a 21. Come on now, let's, let's go to these, let's go to these tutoring sessions. Let's do whatever we can. Because the other thing, statistically speaking, if you do, all right, so if you take additional upper-level classes, then you have a knowledge base that will naturally push you up. But if you don't, and you don't do anything, statistically speaking, you're not going to go from a 17 to 21. I mean, it's, it's not going to happen.
But that's, just as an example, when you look at this category for us and you went across Mississippi on R, we have a tutoring budget with transportation that is $371,000 a year and we're transporting kids home. Not many districts are going to those lengths. When I was the principal at Gucci High School, I did not have this ability. We didn't have transportation for kids. We had great tutoring. We also pay our teachers to tutor after school. But my point is, and gosh, I'm sorry to my leadership team, but my third year at Gucci High School, 100% of my children in three subject areas passed a state subject area test and had a 400 mean scale score. Had a 94.9% pass rate on our English II test. Proficiency rates were above 93%. There's not very many principals in history of the state that has those numbers. And we're a blue ribbon school as a result of it. And we had a three-year progression on that. When I hear, Mr. Johnson, that we're doing homework in class, that's like waving a red flag in front of a bull for me. Now, you guys would say, "Well, you're too hard on your teachers." I'm not complaining that you expect them to teach bell to bell. I do, because we're at work and our kids are difficult and it takes a great will to teach in our schools. Because you have to have a greater will than the child with the least amount of will in your classroom if we're going to really help our kids. So, I mean, it's just, and we're a B district. We've been a B district for a long time with all the changes. This year, I'm sweating more than I've ever sweated about the potential of being a C district just because there's not a level accountability model this year for us. And it could be that one or two points that make a difference for us. for us. But, when I look at places like Arlington Elementary, that was an F two years ago or three years ago, and a D, and then they're an A. I mean, there's a lot of work going in this. And so, I just want y'all to understand as a board, we're trying to pull out all the stops here. I mean, we really are. And the only way that, we have an avenue for teachers if there's an issue. We have faculty advisory. And any teacher in this district and any parent in this district can show up in that lobby. And nine times out of 10, I'm going to be able to see them, even if they don't have an appointment. And I will always tell people what they want to hear when they come see me. That's another complaint you're going to get. But, the bottom line is, we're at work. And I want my kids in my classes, and I've told Miss Damon this before, my child is very advanced. I want her working. Whenever she finishes an assignment ahead of the class, give my child enrichment work. I don't want her grading papers or sitting idly. I want that level of expectation for our kids. So, I just want y'all to understand that we're climbing some big mountains right now with our students and trying to balance everything and have great athletics and great band and all that stuff. I mean, there's a lot of things we do for kids. We've got nine kids going National History Day. I know y'all heard that narrative. I mean, we've got a kid that's going to have her exhibit in the Smithsonian. How many kids can ever say that in Mississippi? So, we've got some really cool things going on for kids. And I'm not being defensive. I'm just telling you that every school district is different. I know in Jackson County, there's a lot of test, test, test prep that goes on. I know in Harrison County, there's a lot of test prep that goes on. But, all of us have our own opinions about, you know, how much testing we do and all that. Glenn East is an ACT guy over in Gulfport. They're more focused on ACT. And that's where we're trying to go. We're more focused on ACT and have been for years. But, I just want y'all to know that we're working. And these teachers are working. And they are burnt out. And we do have high attrition rates because there are easier places to work than here with kids that are more ready to learn than kids who start their time off here. Because at elementary level, we have a, you know, a big turnover right now.
But, we are trying to increase the ACT scores at least to the college and career rating, so that they don't have to go to junior college and take remedial math and remedial reading or those types of things. Because you pay for those classes, but you don't get any credit. And so, you take an at-risk student, and then you already put them there. And they're saying the schools, the high schools didn't do a good enough job. And so, then you have students that don't make it. I mean, we're also required to track the data of graduates. And so, when we look at the data of graduates, where are they? Are they post-secondary? Did they go into the military? Did they go into the workforce? I mean, we're looking at making productive adults out of these kids, which is why the, we're so excited about the career academies. Because we understand that when you're looking at providing for a healthy adult that is self-sufficient and can provide for their families and that can do whatever. I mean, there are so many professions out there. Instead of saying, everyone's going to college or everyone's going into the workforce. I mean, it's, we do a lot behind the scenes. And by we, I mean, teachers, the principals. And it does come back to the accountability. I mean, it comes back to how are we graded? And so, everyone is stressed out.
We were, you know, we were talking about great things that come from our district. Why don't we just brag on one of our board members? Matt was, when he was in school, he was the National Skills USA president. I think he's the only one from the state of Mississippi ever to be that. And I don't know if there's been one.
Some other things prior to that.
Well, that's stuff I'd like to see in a waiver. But, you know.
But, that's where, but I didn't even, I didn't even interview them.
Well, then you can say, well, there was somebody that applied and that didn't get an interview. Because this is how it felt about them and how I thought they would do. Or, their experience wasn't anything compared to this most qualified candidate. This is the most qualified candidate, and these are the reasons why.
Well, you know, that's easier to do than the other side.
Right. Just prove while this waiver is set about somebody's being not this grade or up to par. Just tell the person that you're.
Right. But, the way the policy, y'all were interpreting the policy to read is, preference goes to that person.
That's how it reads right now.
And that's an impossibility.
We're willing to strike, try to cut out. But, let me say this. You know, we talk about people that we may think might not be quite good enough. I bet you every person in here that's taught in the classroom that's an administrator now will tell you that I'm better, I'm a better administrator than I was a teacher. In other words, I hope you'd say that. You know, because Doc's administrators that said, hey, you know, our counselors say, I'm a better counselor than I was a teacher. I was good. But, I think I'm a better counselor. You know?
Well, my take, first of all, and maybe I misunderstood, Ms. Wilson, what you're saying. But, the other thing, when we talk about qualified candidates, I mean, you know, I go home last night after the top 10% banquet, I turn on the draft. There are tons of people that are qualified. But, those teams have to pick the best. That's their livelihood. I mean, I think Mr. Rudolph's was qualified for the NFL draft when he came out of college.
But, you know.
He just barely missed the seventh round. And it's probably somebody's bad choice, sir. I'll just, I'll be honest with you.
But, on the flip side of that.
I'm sure. But, I mean, the point is, there are a lot of people that are qualified to play in NFL, based on the paper, on what the job description says. But, you only get seven rounds to pick.
But, on the flip side of that, those people that are picked by that team, they move within that city or general area because they have to perform their job.
And boy, I mean, I understand what you're saying. And that's why I say qualified, we all say qualified. But, for you, you get the interview, you got to be qualified. That's the first thing. So, I mean, you're not getting the interview not qualified. So, that's where I'm kind of going with, yeah, I do want the best for my kid, your kid, and all the other kids as well. And, yeah, it weighs to some, you know, when you see people to the community. But, if that's the best one, in my opinion, if the best one is within your community, yeah. But, if the best one stays 30 miles away, and they come to work every day, and you don't have a problem with absentee because they have to leave.
Well, just, and that's why I say, just because the job title is the same, doesn't mean that the description and the qualifications necessarily have to be the same either. If we're looking for something specific in an administrative position that's listed out of that group, and then three years later, that individual moves on to better themselves or whatever reason, and we're seeking this position out again, that doesn't mean that we don't revisit that job description and address those qualifications. Right? So, when we say, on paper, these people are qualified, on paper, these people are qualified. If we have so many people on paper that are qualified for these positions, perhaps we should up our qualifications, I guess, is what I'm getting at. And I think that would potentially weed out a lot of what we're dealing with right now. And I get the support system thing. I do, to a degree. I have, you know, some empathy for that, I guess I'll say. However, go back to what Sonny said, you know, we pay good money to the physicians that are listed out in this policy. When you've reached that level, you're making a decent salary. We have several very high-quality after-school programs right here in this district that will take great care of your children until you can leave out of here and pick them up on your way home. So, if it's just the somebody that watches my kids after they get off school and before I get home, I'm going to need to see better than that personally.
Well, I will say this. When you look at those positions, and you start saying they're paid well, they are paid well, but they're not paid exceptionally well. You know, our, the ladies and gentlemen around this table, we don't make a lot more than the administrators of Biloxi or Gulfport, you know, or Ocean Springs. So, that's the other piece. If you're going to attract a quality person that's already been, you know, like, you know, Mr. Rudolph's is about to look for an assistant superintendent of secondary. Well, you know, if you know of a high-quality person that's already serving in that role in another district, and you're thinking, this person's going to come in, hit the door, run, and I'm not going to have to train. But, our salary isn't going to be that competitive for, you know, if we're going to somebody in, you know, some other districts don't pay you on the coast. But, if you're looking at coast people, and this is kind of where we live and where we compete, you can sit there and talk about George County or Stone County. And they're kind of close to us. But, that's not who we're competing with. You know, we're competing with people right up and down these three counties. So, you know, I agree and disagree. I mean, you know, you're not going to pull somebody from another high-performing district because our salaries aren't, they're good. But, are they, they're not going to come.
Well, then maybe we need to revisit that and raise our salary. We're going to get the best.
Yeah. Well, I think it's a balance. Because we want the best. Everybody on the board wants the best. And probably one of the top five complaints that I've gotten, and as the board, we're somewhat the democratic representative of the community, is that we have too many people that are the face of the district and that live outside the district or don't send their kids to the district. That's a very, very common complaint. So, that's what we're trying to balance. We want the best. We want the best. But, we're trying to address our constituents' concerns that we don't have buy-in from our face of our district. And so, I think, to me, the solution is the waiver. So, that we can, y'all can present a waiver to us with the director-level people, with the principal-level people at the high school and junior high level, and say, look, they have their mother-in-law that lives next door. We can say, you know, we understand that. Or, XYZ. But, not only has Mr. Backs heard from administrators that said, I'm not going to send my kids to this district, our parents that come talk to us have heard that from people. And we need to make sure that we are not hiring people that feel like that. We've got to make sure that we have people in this district at director level, at principal level, that are going to send their kids to this district. And we need to be able to either look them in the eye with a waiver and say, I understand, Mr. Blake, that is a valid reason. Now, or they can say, you know what, financially, it doesn't make sense because my wife works here, great job, she's the support system. But, you know what I'm going to do? I'm going to bring my kids to this district because I'm going to work in this district. You know, I mean, there's balance there. But, I think that's the purpose of the waiver. And so, I am for keeping the language of number one the same. I'm also for tweaking the language of number one and number two to add some discretion. Well, actually, not number one, because now number one. So, I'm for tweaking old number one and number two that's been struck out, tweaking that personally to add some discretion there. What was old number three, which is now number one, that starts the superintendent of schools, I'm for that still because I think we have a waiver in position that can address the concerns, individualized examples that we've heard for those.
How about you and Kelly sit down with Mr. Jurisprudence and draft something, and then bring it back to us.
Okay. So, let me just clarify because I'm taking notes. Basically, y'all want middle school principals and above is kind of what it is. It's middle school principals, high school principals, central office directors and such. Okay.
Does that include assistant directors?
No.
Because they're administrators.
They are administrators.
Okay.
How many assistant directors do we have?
I have two.
I have one.
I have one.
I would say that the director, at the high school, we do not require the assistant.
I think it's.
They're all administrators.
It basically says, central office administrators to directors.
I vote.
That's talking central office people. That's your.
That's off the, that the existing team's grandfather did.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we've invested substantial funding to train.
And it's not fair to the staff that are currently in place to say, you took a job under X of a pretense, and now all of a sudden that has changed. That's not fair to those individuals. And that'd be a horrible thing for us to do as a district. But, I think we just need to clarify these expectations for forward-looking employees.
How does that relate to industry transfers, future industry transfers?
I think it's going to be applicable. Are you meaning somebody?
For promotion-based, somebody wants to go to junior high principal, the high school principal.
They have to by June 30th.
Well, middle school, they would already be potentially in play, would potentially fall within this already.
Yeah. But, I mean, that's the point.
You would be assistant principal.
We can get, but I mean, that's where we entertain a waiver.
And well, it states in here, in current number one, you have a year. If you're promoted from within to any of these positions, you have to move by June 30th.
Okay. So, just to kind of play this out, and I probably shouldn't have said a name of an employee on camera.
That's okay. But, let me say, crackhead on camera.
I'm real good at saying to somebody.
Because I worked for the same right in there.
We hear it so much, we don't even think it's a negative thing.
Yeah.
One take, Wayne.
But, so, if that person I mentioned earlier is promoted into that position and doesn't want to relocate because of the support system, still eligible through the waiver.
Right. Just bring a waiver to us.
But, the legal side of that is, is me making the job offer to that person, bringing him before the board, and then the board potentially saying, and I, could you address that with?
Based upon work.
Aren't all recommendations?
Yeah. I just want to make sure that. And then this pulls out, and I just want to make sure, everything beneath is now, it's okay without the preferential.
Well, I would be number three.
Like, well, like number one and number two, old number one and number two, right now is mandatory.
I don't think, I don't know if we should make it mandatory. I'm interested in board feedback. For 1,100, I mean, that you shall give preference. Maybe, maybe may give preference.
The other day, I think those shalls need to be shoulds.
Or, yeah, or mayes or something. You know, on number one and number two, you know, preference may be given to someone who lives in the district. Preference may be given to someone who lives in the county. And like at the bottom, in other words, residency is the consideration that may determine the recommendation for employment. I think you could just put a period on the end of that. I don't think you have to say, should all other considerations be simpler. I think there's just some discretion there that if, quite frankly, if y'all bring someone in front of us or at y'all's level, and we're like, yeah, but this person, I understand they're close, right? They're close. And there's a person that's just so banged up in the community. They're at every football game. They're at every baseball game. They're in everything. And y'all want us to approve this person that's 45 minutes away, and they have an incredible resume. They live 45 minutes away. They're not going to send our kids to this district. We have the discretion to say, you know what, we can just boom residency. That's going to, that's going to, we have that discretion. Y'all have that.
And you have it anyway. Yeah. Y'all have it. Y'all have the authority to make whatever decision you choose to make.
Okay. With that, all right.
But, I'd like to get this language together to do the revision before the next board meeting. Because I do need to open up my interviews for superintendent.
And we're saying, we, waiver is going to be, or the break going to be above, or tomorrow we're going to what?
Everything is written in.
Everything.
You could waiver.
Got to change that junior high to middle school.
Yes. The positions, I think, are well-defined how they are right now. Again, retroactive to current employees. I think in regards to subsections one and two, our shalls should be shoulds, or can's, could's.
May.
Right. And then, at the bottom, I like the additional language that's in red there. So, you know, it can be a deciding factor, again, period. And that's my take on it.
So, I can, guys, if we're good and we get that language together, can I just give you the information reports really quick? I know you already know them there in the book. But, I would promise that I would get us out of here by 12 if we could. Under English learner education, anyone who has a question, call me. You can call me on the weekend. Call me anytime. But, English learner education program review, just want to make sure that we acknowledge that.
What tab is that?
It's tabbed in. And in our district, we'll have a bi-literacy seal this year for our students on the Plumbers. And we are actually the forerunner of the state of Mississippi to have this bi-literacy seal done. The ME is actually working on their bi-literacy seal, the state bi-literacy seal. And we'll have gotten ahead of that name from a, we talked a little bit about Mr. Corple. We've got extensive information here about, you know, what our attendance has been and our family interactive center. I've got lots of tours through the interactive center there. And I sent y'all an email about what other districts are doing. From our inventory, Ms. Harvell put together our switch years and our computer inventory for every school. So, you can look over that. They're all on graphic organizers. And then, Mr. Johnson, and I put them in two Chilean constitutions as well to be able to get. But, Webber Farquhar is here. And I know we have very little time. But, just so I can go over our process. Very, if you'll look on the sheet, let me find the maintenance tab. Because I lost my maintenance, I took my tab out so I could keep track of it. Now I can't find it. But, if you look, there's the age of roof schedule. We talked about Gucci, roof's going to be done. Everything, there's a list within your supplement. Everything, there's a list within your supplemental that gives you the new costs that we'll have, the potentially new costs in current district, but also what the obsolescence level will be by industry this year. We do not know that. So, we really don't have a local dollar starting number. So, it makes it real difficult on some of these budgetary issues, and we will have a future work session for budget, because there is no way to get it in today with all the other things.
It needs to be someday anyway.
Right. And so, you have... But what we did include in here was our roof replacement schedule.
What tab?
But we typically look at a 25-year replacement. We are a comprehensive high school. It was sooner than the time has. There are some leaks in both buildings that we've addressed from time to time into specific spots that didn't fit. The next thing that you have in your tab is the work orders that Mr. Parker's team works on. After that, you have JDM board-approved projects. After that, you have non-JDM projects, and you can see the dates of everything that's been done. And also, let me tell y'all, through our faculty advisory and parent advisory, they give us things that need to be done on campuses, and we are just about 100% in getting those things done on local projects. And most of the time, within the month that we're asked to get them done. And we will be hiring pressure washers this summer to do some more cleanup. We will be doing some landscaping this summer as well. And projects discussed by superintendent with funding is third column. And then, I'm looking for my other project sheet, the one that's got six-years stuff on it. And that might be the last exhibit I can give. Oh, no, never mind. I'm sorry. If you just go to J and you look at, you've got audit reports, and I just really want to give you this information so you have it available. You can look at our auditing process over the years. We've had no internal control efficiencies now. We've got a two, four, six, nine-year streak going on that. If you'll look at your tax comparison of where we were in 2005 with what people pay for taxes on homes compared to today from the school district, you can look at the difference. It's, I think, less than a dollar difference from 2005 to now, which I know we have went back up with our village because of the construction work we're doing. We have a comprehensive list of JDM projects here. The number is now at $109 million of projects. But this is the sheet I wanted to show you here. Y'all look here. All right. So, because this was a specific question by Mr. Johnson.
Yep.
So, how our process by the board has been at the beginning of the school year, after we find out what our local contribution is going to be, and we find out how much money we return to the budget from this year, then we typically have a block of money. Now, this year, we're trying to have a big enough block of money to do Goochay High School's roof for next summer. And that is our last major construction project that we will do that's in the multimillion-dollar range. At that point, we start working. And of course, you know, we've been doing some smaller projects. We've got bathrooms. We did the gym. We did the new classrooms. But if you'll look, there's a corresponding number on here, and I've shown you this before, that this is strategic plan numbers that are lined out in a strategic plan column. That's our code. So, we try to do everything based on what the code's strategic plan is, and then we have our list of projects that we're doing right now. So, these are all projects that are done. The only outstanding project for us right now, I believe, is our Performing Arts Center that's still out there. So, but it probably will not be until around September before the board will come together and say, "Okay, roof's our first priority at Goochay High School. Do we have any other dollars that we can put towards any other projects on any camp?" That could be air conditioner replacement, small roof repair, renovation of bathrooms, those kind of projects. So, I just want to make sure y'all are there, because that was a very specific question I got from Mr. Johnson. I've got... Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. On, I'd like to see, like, I know we talked about last year about the maintenance of our buildings. Like, I see the roof replacement. I'd like to know, and it may be too hard, maybe that's not the way you just do it, move it forward, like the HVAC systems, like things like that that are going to come up.
We've got air conditioning as well. That's...
Yeah. Like the painting and the exteriors or keeping the buildings up.
And when we keep... When we're asking long-range facilities, maintenance, plan continuously, the format that we use for the roof is excellent. I like the way that we did that. HVAC, when was the last time that unit was replaced? If you can get an overhead look at the district and say, typically, we're going to get X-years of service out of X-size of a unit. So, anticipated replacement of Y-date around HVAC or roofing restrooms. We can get an average of, you know, when we replace those, how long has this been here? Those big key things, I don't want to know down to tile on the floor. I'm talking about my major expense there as far as infrastructure.
It would be instrumental in knowing what, like, when you talked about, okay, we're going to do the roof, so what else can we tackle? What's going to be coming up? If we're going to have an HVAC system at the high school, it needs to be completely replaced or is on the brink, I'd rather know that before we assign it somewhere else.
Yes. And say, "Well, we... Sorry, we got this emergency line item for $35,000 because these units went bad." And it's gone bad in the same time duration, the last three times. If you don't say, "It went bad again the fourth time."
Right.
So, just knowing those things. But that was great. That answered the question that I had. Board members, for y'all, bust out of here. I asked Ms. Grim when we got here this morning, you'll probably see some things on the news from the state about some miscalculations and coding regarding expenses and the way the supplements are going to be paid out to educators. And I had fear all night that we were going to be in that boat I shouldn't have, because I know that our HR department and finance department continuously demonstrate why they're the best in the business. So, when people ask you, "Are we in that boat?", I'm being assured that the answer is, "No, we are not in that boat."
With one caveat. I got a call from John Reed on my way into work this morning, because he's always worried that I'm going to get upset and start blasting the local delegation about whatever happens.